All right, all right, council. Looks like we have a full body present virtually. So we're going to go ahead and begin our regular scheduled meeting for Thursday, December 3rd at 9:02 in the morning. City Clerk, will you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Krevasi.
Present.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio.
Here.
President Arias.
Present. Gavin, do we have a pledge of allegiance video? Or is Gavin not online?
He's not online, sir.
If not, Council Vice President, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I will. Join me. Okay, everybody ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, council. Vice President, City Clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda to announce today?
Yes, sir. There are plenty of changes. Let me find my sheet.
So we'll take it slow so we can try and...
Yes, we will. It's going to get confusing. Okay, let's see. So we have, the first change to the agenda is the proclamation for Bryson DeChambeau is being removed from the agenda by Councilmember Krevasi. Item 1A, approval of the minutes for November 19th, 2020, regular meeting and November 19th, 2020 special meeting is being continued to December the 10th, 2020. Item 1E, actions pertaining to authorizing to accept the submission of grant applications through statewide park development and community revitalization program, Prop 68. The date noted in the fiscal impact session should be March 2021 instead of mid-December 2020. The 10 o'clock item is continued hearing pertaining to Sierra Sky Park, Council District 2, is being continued to February 4th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. per request of the applicant. The following items are being removed from the agenda. Item 1D, consideration of an amendment to Sections 9-2102 and 9-2115C of the Fresno Municipal Code regarding permitted location of card rooms is being removed from the agenda by Councilmember Arias. Item 1N, actions related to lease agreement of city-owned land at the Fresno-Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility, Council District 3 was removed from the agenda by Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Soria. Item 1Q, approved the city attorney amended contract was removed from the agenda by Councilmember Arias. Item 1R, approve an owner participation agreement to the Riesi Assimii Trust in Masood and Johanna Assimii Trust relating to the residential rental property at 1740 VMS Avenue was removed from the agenda and continued to December 10th, 2020 by Councilmember Arias. Let's see, the following items are being removed from consent and moved to contested consent for discussion. Item 1C, actions pertaining to the City of Fresno contract awarded of parking facility management services, bid file 9554, and that's being pulled by Council President Arias. Item 1E, actions pertaining to authorizing to accept the submission of grant applications through statewide park development and community revitalization program, Prop 68, was pulled by Councilmember Krevasi. Item 1F, approve a substitution of enlisted subcontractor JT2, Inc., doing business as Todd Companies for Fresno Fire Station Number 18, and that's being pulled by Councilmember Krevasi. Item 1G as in George, actions pertaining to the animal control facility project was pulled by Council President Arias. Item 1K, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Semiannual Report, April 2020 through September 2020, was pulled by Councilmember Soria. Item 1O, approve the reappointment of Jim Poptanich to the Fresno-Madera area of agency on aging board, was pulled by Councilmember Sparza. Item 1P, approve the reappointment of Robin Goldbeck to the Historic Commission, was pulled by Councilmember Sparza. And then I'd also like to announce that we have a special council meeting today. And it's covering three items, which are closed session items. Property negotiator is regarding the Grizzly Stadium. Conference with real property negotiator, and that's property APN 446-020-10. And finally, property negotiator for 1444 West White Avenue. I believe, maybe one more. And then there's one more, and it's an open session item regarding actions pertaining to the acquisition of 1444 West White Avenue. So those are all the changes I have.
That final item is actually added to the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, say that again, Doug.
That final item is added to the consent calendar. So 1444.
Okay, added to consent.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a question about 1D before you all vote on the agenda.
I have a question. What, the item that was just added to the consent, Yvonne, could you say what that one is again?
Okay, hold on one second. Let me turn up my volume.
Councilor Bretafeld first, if I recall, the item added to the consent calendar is the acquisition of real property for the address 1444 White Avenue.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So council, since we have that on consent, I'm going to want to go to closed session first, so the council can be briefed on that, on those state items before we consider the items for public action. Does that work for you guys? We'll move to closed session early?
Just that item in closed session?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we have the clerk discern, she started with 1C, what's contested consent, but what was actually just straight out pulled from the agenda?
Sure.
The items removed are items 1D, as in David, 1N, as in Nancy, 1Q, as in Quarter, 1R, as in Ray. Those are all of the ones that I have for being pulled from the agenda.
Yeah, and I was a little confused on the 1G because it says 1G is removed, but then it said 1G is pulled by Council President Arias.
No, the 1G, the animal shelter, is just being pulled from consent for a separate discussion.
Okay, got it.
So just to clarify, City Clerk, 1D, 1N, 1Q, and 1R are removed from the agenda. So 1O and P are just for contested consent, is that correct?
For contested consent, I have 1C as in Charlie, 1E as in Ed, 1F as in Frank, 1G as in George, 1K as in Kate, 1O as in Owner, and 1P as in Paul.
Thank you.
1A and 1Q were also removed from the agenda.
Thank you.
Do we have anything left on the regular agenda?
Right.
All right.
Council President, can you let me know when I can address 1D before it's removed?
Sure, go ahead.
No, I'm just wondering why it's being removed from the agenda. We had been working with your office on this item in particular, and I know our current card room owner, Kyle Kirkland, has concerns because he cannot operate at his current location outside right now, like other card rooms are in other adjacent cities, and this is keeping 300 people out of work. And it's very vital that we move this item forward because his new location would allow these folks to have jobs. And if you recall, before COVID, we get approximately $1 million of table tax revenue from Club One. So if you are going to remove it from the agenda today, I would ask that it be heard on the 10th.
Absolutely. Those are all fair concerns, so we'll table it to December 10th.
And Council President, I just want to ask, because this is the first time on the agenda that I see it. No one has talked to me. I don't know if other council members have been talked to by either Kyle or city manager. So I think that that would probably be a good thing to happen before any of us vote on a significant change and amend, you know, our code, our zoning code.
I have made rounds with most council members, and I know that Kyle has as well. I need to check with the city attorney, Councilmember Soria, because I believe you may have a conflict with this one.
City Manager, let's not go in...
Why would I have a conflict?
I don't think we should talk about that publicly.
The city manager...
The attorney? Can you clarify? Because I'm tired of being told that I have a conflict when there are other folks that own property downtown. I don't own any property downtown that's on this.
The card room is moving to Councilmember Soria.
This is simply a change in the municipal code.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it's a policy change.
All right, council. So we will consider the item on December 10th. For the record, City Manager, the applicant has not communicated with me either. So I think there's quite a bit of work that the applicant and city staff need to do with the whole council before we consider a citywide policy change.
Okay, and we can do that. And I am hearing, Councilmember Soria, that Dan Zach met with your staff. He met with Terry Cox.
Council President, I would just add that when I saw the item on the agenda, I telephoned Kyle. I had a lengthy discussion with him, since this move would be in my district, this critical to Granite Park and to the city to maintain and operate that business as soon as possible as stated by the city manager. So I have spoke with him at length, and I'm prepared to support the item.
Thank you, Council Vice President. With that, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda as noted by the city clerk?
So move.
Yeah, Council President, you didn't ask the council members if you wanted to remove anything else.
Oh, that's right. My apologies, council member. Is there any other changes to the agenda that the council members like to make?
Yes, so City Clerk had noted 1O and 1P were pulled for discussion by myself. It was my intention that they be tabled.
So we'll make it note that the member has requested those items be tabled. Any other changes from the council?
Will those items be coming back on December 10th, the appointments?
So you noticed that these are being tabled, as well as some of the previous appointments from the last meeting that we had. My thought process there was some of these are pretty significant appointments, a long-term appointments, that I think we should work with the next mayor on making, since they're alongside this next administration.
Mr. President?
Mr. Bossy?
At what point can I make a motion to keep those items on the agenda and have a very fun, robust conversation with my good colleague Nelson Asparza?
You can make the motion to keep the items on the agenda at this point.
I would like to make a motion to keep items O and P on the agenda for this meeting.
I will second that.
Okay. Let's do roll call on keeping those items on the agenda.
Can we have Councilmember Sparza, did you want to have a discussion about that?
Well, I mean, I stated my preference, right? Again, the thought process behind that is we have a couple of city officials, right? Not too much turnover, but there will be a little bit of turnover going into January. I know some of these appointments are four-year appointments, and appreciate the mayor continuing to put folks up for these appointments. But again, they're going to serve alongside the next mayor for the next four-plus years, potentially. So, you know, want to take a closer look and give the next mayor an opportunity to work with us on who these appointments might be.
Yeah, and I totally respect that. I think due diligence is important. The reason why in the past I supported postponing the appointments was the thought that courtesy for my colleagues, because sometimes we want to take a closer look. And with those appointments you're talking about, there are more serious appointments. I did meet with the candidates. I totally get that. Now, these two individuals for today are actually residents of District 2. They're both reappointments, and I met with both of them. They're both highly qualified. And I just think that, you know, Mayor Brand, I have not heard anything from the new mayor about opposing any of these folks. I don't want to Merrick Garland, Mayor Brand, he has made these appointments, and I think these folks deserve a fair up or down vote. And I'd like to move forward with the two today, and I would appreciate that consideration from colleagues.
I'm okay moving forward with them, and I appreciate Councilmember Sparza's point. But I mean, all due respect, I think we still have Mayor Lee that's there until December 31st. And putting it in perspective, these positions require recommendations oftentimes to policy, and I think the council's space is more policy. So, you know, no disrespect to the incoming mayor, but I think as a body, I think we need to move forward.
All right, it looks like we've had enough discussion on the matter. Roll call, please, on keeping the items on the agenda.
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Krevasi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria. I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
President Arias.
No. The item remains on the agenda. Two items remain on the agenda for discussion today. Is there any other changes from the council on this agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
All right. Is there a second? By a second by Member Soria? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld. You did, but I think you said yes. Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Krevasi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria.
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
President Arias.
Yes. All right, council, that takes us to the ceremonial presentations. We will begin with our favorite friend out at Fresno State, Mr. Lawrence Salinas Day, and we'll hand it over to our Council Vice President Capriolio for this ceremonial presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. This is a great morning because we have several wonderful, excellent people from our community to honor today. One of them is Larry Salinas, as Council President mentioned. As many of you know, Council Larry is a valued member of Dr. Castro's Cabinet team and serves as the Executive Director of Governmental Relations. In other words, he's the go-to guy. And if you don't know him, just look at the Central California Blood Bank Center billboards where he is highlighted. He's a really, you can see him on the screen. He's quite a dashing figure, and we love him to death. He joined Fresno State, the family at Fresno State in 2016. He's done some outstanding work at Fresno State. Unfortunately, unfortunately, he will be departing to join Dr. Castro in the CSU Chancellor's office. It's a great honor. That will be starting in January 2021, and Larry will take a new role as a senior advisor to the chancellor. Larry, I could talk all day about you and the impact you've had, not only at the university, but in District 4 and me personally. You've always been there for me. We've always talked about a lot of different issues and how to settle it and resolve it with President Castro and Debbie A. Stone and the cabinet. You've got a great group at the university. You will be sorely missed. I won't be able to, I guess I could call you. It'll be a long-distance call, but I know you'll always be in our thoughts and prayers and wishing you the best of luck in your new position. And I know you and Dr. Castro will never forget us, as we'll never forget you. And we will always be bold. Thank you, Larry. Would you like to say a word or two?
Sure. Thank you very much, Vice President Capriolio, and thank you to your wonderful staff, Laura Rios, and I know Kathy Casas had a hand in this, and I truly appreciate it. You know, I'm humbled by this really kind gesture by the city. It's been an honor to work with you and the mayor and each of the council members and the city staff as well. You've got a top-notch staff there. You guys have a hard job, and you're all dedicated public servants. So let me just publicly thank you for the four, almost five years that I've been here at Fresno State, that I've worked with each and every one of you in some capacity or another. And want to thank you for your support of Fresno State as well. I know several of you, I can count a few, that are proud alumni like myself, so that's great. So go Dawgs.
Go Dawgs.
In that spirit of public service, I just want to say, I think it's our responsibility to contribute to the greater good of our community. And while this proclamation recognizes my work at Fresno State and some of my career, I want to demonstrate my commitment this morning to public service to others by contributing $250 to your Toys for Tots program and also pledging a similar contribution to the Solario family, who we all know suffered an unimaginable loss in the tragic passing of their baby boy, five-year-old Anton, just two days ago. So I hope that others will embrace the spirit of the season by giving to those who may be in need. And with that, I just want to thank the council and you, Vice President Capriolio. You've been our sidekick here in District 4 at Fresno State and the students and faculty and staff. And I know Dr. Castro and Debbie A. Stone, our vice president, have benefited greatly from the work that you and Laura have done with us. So with that, thank you for allowing me to speak a few moments, and I'm just truly humbled by the gesture. Thank you all.
Larry, if I can, listen, I will match your donations today. And that's just, that represents you in the essence of you. And I wanted to also bring up, and I forgot in the passion of this moment, that Dr. Castro and you are the A-Team. At City Hall, my A-Team member is Laura Rios, and she's been with me forever, it seems. And poor thing, she's worked her fingers to the bone on everything that we do. And so you're A-Team to my A-Team. I appreciate you. I can't say enough how great you've done for our community, and same with Laura Rios. I don't give her enough accolades, and when I do, she won't recognize it. But she's in my office right now. She has no choice. So to you folks, thank you again so much for everything you've done for us. And I think we could read the proclamation now.
Whereas it is with great respect and best wishes that we extend our heartiest congratulations to Lawrence Salinas as he begins his new career journey as senior advisor to California State University CSU Chancellor, when our own Dr. Joseph Castro begins his tenure as the AC CSU Chancellor and the only one from the Central Valley. And whereas the City of Fresno proudly recognizes Lawrence Salinas for his outstanding service during his time at California State University Fresno. And whereas Lawrence has been a resident of the Central Valley for 41 years and is a proud alumnus of Fresno State, where he graduated in 1986 with a bachelor's degree in political science. And whereas he came to the Fresno State's president office in 2016 with over 30 years of public affairs and political experience, including serving as a founding director for California's 10th campus, UC Merced. And whereas among his greatest achievement is that of being a dad to his three grown children, Lance, Amber, and Alexis, and the holder of his heart, six-year-old grandson, Austin. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby honor and recognize Lawrence Salinas as he continues his career path with the CSU Chancellor. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, to be Lawrence Salinas Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you very much, council, and I want to give a shout out and thanks to Councilmember Soria for having my alma mater, President Ohio, in the backdrop.
And so Larry, here we go. I'm going to officially hand this off to you.
I got it.
You got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Congratulations, Larry. Good luck and stay in touch.
I shall. You guys do the same.
Yeah, don't forget about us in Long Beach, Larry.
I won't, councilman.
Larry, tell your mom that you've always been a gentleman and scholar, so she...
I will do that. This will be special. Yesterday was her 86th birthday, so she will appreciate that. I appreciate that you put Lawrence. I usually get that when I'm in trouble.
Make sure you give her that frame for she can put up in her house and not in your house.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council President.
Good luck, Larry.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Council Vice President, you have the floor for the Fresno-Madera Toys for Tots Marathon Month.
Thank you very much, Council President. Toys for Tots, we welcome Jessica and give her congratulations for her work and all they do as a group meeting the needs of our young constituents during the holidays. Our kids are the most important asset of our city. They are our future. I also want to thank the U.S. Marine Corps for their service to our community and for them providing a wonderful service to the children in our great city of Fresno. I just wanted to add, if I may, I'm going to turn my screen to my brother's uniform. It's off here to my right. He's been in my office since day one. He's a proud member of the United States Marine Corps. He was a combat veteran in Vietnam. He left us eight years ago, and he's with me every day. With that, Jessica, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks for myself, Toys for Tots, and my team. We really appreciate your support. You know, we've had support from the county board of supervisors, and now you are the first city to come aboard to officially support our program. We're hoping that's going to set a standard for some of the other cities to help support us officially. And I really appreciate the donations and the match that you made, Vice President, so thank you for that. We're hoping that we're going to be able to make some children happy this Christmas, even with the pandemic and the creep fire things that we've been having some hard times, you know, some in the local community. So we're hoping to do some good things for them, bring some smiles to the face during this time.
Thank you. And let's not forget to look for the train. That's the official logo, and help Toys for Tots. Let's bring a lot of smiles to the children of Fresno. So please, everyone participate. If you can match the donation, that would be fantastic as well. Everything is appreciated, and this is a critical time, especially since COVID is here, and to help our children try to understand the tough times that we're in right now. And the best way to do that is with toys and clothing. So thank you, Jessica. And Madam Clerk, would you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas Toys for Tots was established in 1947 by the Marine Corps Reserve to deliver through the gift of a new toy during the holiday season, a meshes of hope to the less fortunate children. And whereas this program has grown to be truly exceptional by distributing the gift of a new toy during the holiday season. And whereas the Marine Corps League Fresno Detachment 014, a veterans' organization of men and women who have served the Marine Corps along with their associate members, is recognized as a registered local community organization of the National Marines Toys for Tots Foundation, whose members volunteer countless hours to the Toys for Tots program for all Fresno-Madera counties, with a direct positive impact to the children within the City of Fresno. And whereas in 2019, they helped over 43,000 children and distributed 59,472 toys throughout the Fresno-Madera counties. And whereas December 4th through the 6th, 2020, has been designated as Toys for Tots Marathon Weekend, which is the biggest toy collection drive of the year for the Fresno-Madera campaign, and will be located at River Park Shopping Center in the City of Fresno, hosted with television affiliate ABC 30. And whereas to bring awareness to the Fresno-Madera Toys for Tots Drive and to ensure donations collected within the community actually come back to the community, residents are encouraged to look for the train, the official Toys for Tots logo, and donate it by Walt Disney in 1948. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby encourage all Californians to participate and support during the month of December for the Fresno-Madera Toys for Tots Campaign Marathon Weekend and all Toys for Tots Official Toy Collection Events for children within the City of Fresno. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of December 2020 to be Fresno-Madera Toys for Tots Marathon Month in the City of Fresno.
Thank you, City Clerk. And thank you, Jessica, for your service to our country. We appreciate the fact that you're not only serving our country, but also serving our most needy kids in our city. So thank you for that.
Jessica, I'm glad that we could bring this forward and get the city committed to you and your program. This is just the beginning. And please relay all this information to your colleagues and enjoy Fresno-Madera Toys for Tots Marathon Month in the City of Fresno. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, go ahead.
No, you can announce, President.
All right, Council President, Vice President, you have the next proclamation to John Gavel Day.
Thank you. Last but not least, the next person we want to recognize is Sergeant John Gavel, or we call him Big John, at the Fresno State Police Department. John's been instrumental in our work. John's been instrumental in our work at Eldorado Park and other neighborhoods all around the university. He works very hard to build the trust that the residents and students have come to recognize when they see Big John. He's big, but he's got a heart of gold. He thinks outside the box on solutions and is always on the lookout to make sure everyone is following the rules. Don't break the law when you're around Big John. Let's just say, put it that way. Again, he cares for the safety of the university community. He cares about the way people get together and collaborate. He's a key instrument with the relationship between Fresno Police Department and the university. We formed a great team there and you can see Danny Kim in particular, as well as my bike unit or our bike unit at Up and Down Shaw Avenue. So John, thank you for your service and dedication for keeping Fresno State, the students and the facility safe, as well as all of District Four residents that are around the university. You're amazing and I can't thank you enough. And I know although I'll be gone, you will continue your service with the police department and always keeping the students in their safety in the forefront of everything you do. So Big John, you're a hero in my eyes and I thank you for your service. And you can say a few words if you like. I know you're kind of shy, but the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much. This is truly an honor. You know, I never dreamed I would catch the attention of such distinguished groups of people. And it's truly an honor. I have a good team. I can't do everything by myself. And I want to thank Danny Kim and all the officers on my ship. They're professionals. They're good people. And without their support, I wouldn't have the freedom to do anything else that I do. And it's all about the community and I appreciate your support. Laura Rios, as chief behind the scenes with a lot of help, I couldn't do everything without that either. So thank you so much.
Well, you and the gentlemen behind you are critical. You're absolutely critical. And I wanted to add that, well, we always talk about community policing and the importance of it in our community, in our neighborhoods. And you and the gentlemen and the people behind you and the team that we've created do that every single day. And that's what it's all about. You've built the trust and communication with the local people in District Four as well as the city of Fresno. So you guys, please continue this good, hard work. We've got it set up perfectly. I know Fresno will continue to benefit from all the good things you all do. And we will read the proclamation. It's a small recognition for a large, gigantic effort that you all put together to make our community safe. So Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas John Gavel is a sergeant at the Fresno State Police Department and served in the Army on active duty. And whereas he was a reserve deputy at the Fresno County Sheriff's Department prior to being hired as a police officer with the Fresno State Police Department on July 21st, 2008, and soon promoted to police sergeant on December 1st, 2011. And whereas Sergeant Gavel works tirelessly to improve safety at the California State University Fresno and the neighborhoods around the campus community to increase visibility and vigilance and sporting events to increase safety. And whereas he works closely with the Northeast Police Department in developing strategies to reduce police calls for service at problem locations and has served the constituents of District Four, the city of Fresno, and the campus community above and beyond the call of duty. And whereas John has firmly embodied the Fresno State Police Department principles of spirit, service, and solutions, he is a strong believer in taking part in the community-oriented policing and problem solving. He is committed to establishing strong community partnerships to identify solutions to campus challenges and committed to being engaged with the residents of the city of Fresno District Four. And whereas among his greatest achievement is that of being a dad to his two daughters, Andrea and Zoe. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and Council Vice President Paul Capriolio do hereby thank and recognize John Gavel for his commitment to making the city of Fresno and Fresno State campus community a safe place to work and play. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and Council Vice President Capriolio do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, to be John Gavel Day in the city of Fresno.
John, there it is, and you've earned it, and please continue your good work. Congratulations. This is a very special day, not only for you, but for our community to recognize you and your team. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Council Vice President. All right, council, we're going to go to council member reports and comments before we proceed with closed session. But before we go there, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item, not on the agenda, as unscheduled oral communication or any item on consent calendar. So I will identify members of the public at this time. The first member is Des Martinez. You are being unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, proceed, Des.
Okay, yes, I understand that they're going to be voting on the Travel Inn today. I wanted to know on Parkway, with all the four motels that have been purchased, how many of these families are going to be able to stay? Because we have a majority of homeless individuals that are now residing in these motels. What are the city's intentions to do with these families? And if they are going to allow them to stay, how many beds is that going to be left for the homeless that are on the streets today? That was it. That's my concern.
Thank you, Des, and we ask you to reach out to HB, so we'll have HB's call you. He's the point person for homeless for the city and he'll be able to provide you responses to those questions, as well as the housing authority, as they are the folks acquiring the properties. Next person will be Lisa Flores. Lisa?
Hi, good morning. I just want to talk to you also too about the Travel Inn. I understand that you guys are looking at getting a CE for the project and I have a couple of issues with that. Currently, the city of Fresno does not have an environmental justice element to the general plan like they're supposed to. I know that you guys have an extension that reaches through, I believe, the end of this year, but at some point you're going to need to address it. And I also understand that you have a financial sunset date of the 30th on this project as well. My problem is, is that the city is obligated to look at environmental justice under CEQA. For example, you're moving, you're going to be moving and changing the usage of this hotel from transient to more of a long-term residential facility. And you have not addressed the environmental justice issue there, and that is air quality. This project abuts 99 and the border of the AB 617 boundary. And we have plenty of issues with PM 2.5 in the area, especially since I believe that, you know, Highway 99 is one of the biggest particulate dumpsters in the area. And a CE cannot address that. Maybe at best a mitigated, a negative declaration, at worst, an EIR. So you know, that's my biggest problem. And also too, just the thought of, are you creating a situation that's going to be mimicking the environmental justice issues you have in the zip code of 93706? Also too, you're going to be setting up housing for families and such with children. And one of the worst parts of town with sex trafficking, drugs, and other other high crime incidents that occur out there. Is that really a wise place to put this transitional, you know, this housing for the homeless? I'm just really concerned. The CE's not right. The site's not right. The air quality's not right. Because when you put housing that close to a freeway, you have to address environmental justice, and I just don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll make a note of those and city attorney, you can get back to the council on some of those concerns. Next person is Brandy.
Hi, I also have a concern about, or some comments regarding 1662 about the Travel Inn property. I'm very glad that we're moving towards more transitional and affordable long-term housing for those who are unhoused and that the shelter is, that we're going to have shelter, especially as some of the COVID-funded housing is closing shelters. I have some concerns. I hope that you'll keep in mind. I know that motel very well because for a year I helped an elderly woman stay there, our organization, with her own money until we can find her a permanent housing. The owners were kind and they kept her room for her when she had to move out once a month and very, very understanding. And but because of that, I also knew the area well. And as was mentioned, it's more beneficial, it is more beneficial for families to be in properties like the Blackstone property, which was resisted, but is safe for families. There is issues, so I do also want to raise concerns regarding if, I know that the goal is to transform this area, but since people are going in before there is a major transformation, what is being done to protect them? What is, how is this being mitigated? Since there'll be other properties that aren't transformed while these housing are running, what is being done to mitigate the environment? Please consider the culture around the shelters won't change just because motels itself changes and plan accordingly. Conversely, I also agree with Des. There are families in this motel and others. I met some of the families, some who were just dealt with a financial blow and that's where they can stay. I also know several individuals who can only afford to stay there. And so I also am concerned about what is being done with them, if there's a plan for them and that they are not simply going to be vacated by the owners, as they are homeless too. And I know that the Travel Inn is one of the most affordable weekly places. So I ask that that be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Next person is Janine. You are unmuted. Just identify yourself and address the council.
Good morning, council. My name is Janine Nkosi. And I'm part of a coalition of renters, Fresno State students and professors, and community-based organizations who care very, very deeply about our community. And so I wanted to address the council today and give comment on our right to counsel because our coalition knows that our right to counsel in housing court will prevent homelessness and benefit thousands of vulnerable renters, especially small children and the elderly. Housing is a fundamental human need, especially during a global pandemic. With COVID cases rising once again and looming over our families' heads, stable housing is literally a matter of public health and it is a matter of life or death. Our homes, we are finding are more essential now more than ever. They're our workplaces. They are our classrooms. They are our hospitals. And our homes, they're everything. Fresno, thankfully, we thank all of you because Fresno has been leading the Central Valley in passing policies and protections to stabilize housing. And so we thank you all for rising to the challenge in this moment and working together to protect our community. In October, two motions were made to explore another absolutely critical piece of a holistic approach to stabilizing housing, and that's a civil right to counsel. So even though many tenants have legal rights that would preserve their homes and entitle them to relief, the laws are very complex and they're very confusing, and so is the court system. So without legal defense, tenants' rights are almost valueless. So Fresno, once again, has the opportunity to lead the Central Valley. And so we wanted to ask the council to provide an update on the motions that were made in October and to urge you all to pass a right to counsel. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next person Alexandra. Alexandra, you've been unmuted. You have the floor. Alexandra?
Hello, my name is Alexandra. Good morning, all. My hope is that Fresno will join the many cities around the country to implement a civil right to counsel program. We have the opportunity to ensure every renter in Fresno has access to comprehensive legal representation, giving families a stronger chance at sheltering in a place that they call home. Now more than ever, we have an opportunity to step up and implement structural policy that Fresno residents need and are asking for desperately. I urge the city council to establish city right to counsel program that will give folks a fighting chance in court and provide them a chance to grow in the communities and thrive in the city that they live in and love. And I urge city council to continue the conversation from the October meeting when two motions were passed to continue a right to counsel conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Jessica. Jessica Ramirez, please identify yourself and you have the floor. Going once, going twice. All right, Jessica, we're going to move on to the next portion of our agenda. And if you're available, we can address you next time. All right, council, let me finish up with council member reports and comments before we proceed to closed session. I'll start off with Councilwoman Soria.
Well, President, I have a couple of comments and maybe a couple of questions as well. So the Santa's Village, which is happening in the city of Fresno, has happened for many years, sponsored by our Fresno PD. This year, they're doing things a little bit different. I know that many of you guys have already contributed to ensure that hundreds of kids get a toy this holiday season. One of the things that I wanted to check with the mayor and the administration, given COVID, the event is going to be in a drive-through fashion. It's going to be a pass-through Fresno City Hall. I know other city halls, and I know that in the past we've decorated City Hall. I would like the city of Fresno not to look like we're a Grinch by us, you know, making it nice. I know that, you know, I've been getting emails from other city mayors that, you know, do the tree lighting or make it beautiful. And I think given that Santa's Village is happening through the front of City Hall, if there's a possibility to decorate it, I think that would be awesome so that our kids and our families that get to pass through there for the Santa's Village event could enjoy some awesome lighting and, you know, Christmas tree decoration. So just wanted to put it out there, hoping that the mayor and the city manager could maybe make something happen. Also, I want to thank Fresno PD, our chief, and also Scott Mosher and the mayor. I, you know, had an opportunity to reach out to folks. As you guys heard, this year, on the first day of the Christmas Tree Lane Drive-Thru Event, we had an awful tragedy and my heart goes out to the mom, the pregnant mom that lost her five-year-old kid or child to just a terrible accident. And I know I had an opportunity to pass by on Shields. This area is right on the edge of my district, along with Councilmember Esparza. And I was glad to see, and I just connected with the chief. I saw an officer out there, but I guess it was a cadet near the railroad, you know, section to make sure that cars are kind of following the rules of the road. I think that it's a reminder to our community to make sure that we're paying attention, that we ask families that are participating in this awesome event that has happened for a long time, that they keep their seat belts and their kids with their seat belts on so that we prevent any tragedies and that they're keeping their eyes out for, you know, any activity with the railroad. Scott Mosher from Public Works, I'm committed to putting out electronic signs out to make sure that folks clear the railroad way. I did ask in my email, and I don't know if we got a response back, but I like the signs also to maybe be at least translated in Spanish so that, like, for example, the mom that was, you know, that had the accident was a Spanish-speaking mother, so that they're actually able to also read it. But anyhow, so I want to thank, you know, folks for quickly taking extra precautions so that we prevent any other deaths in our community, any other accidents and tragedies like the one that we had. So thank you, everyone, for helping on that. And again, my sympathy and prayers to the family that lost this, you know, child, especially now, right before the holiday season.
Councilmember Carvall. Are you identified, councilman? Are you an identified councilman?
Excuse me?
Go ahead, proceed.
The other just thing that I wanted to talk about was our Saturday, December 5th event. We have our kickoff with, for the holiday season. We are partnering again with Neighborhood Industries to do a tamales. Making kit grocery box will have the typical free flu shots and also no-cost COVID testing at Fresno City College from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please let those that are in need to come by and take advantage of these free resources for the community, for those residents that live here in the city of Fresno. And then just lastly, as, as I'm thinking about, you know, the events that we've done, especially like the free grocery distribution events and so forth. One of the issues that I wanted to raise for the council, I know that it's been a conversation amongst the COVID-19 committee and the challenges with ensuring that we are able to enter into agreements with nonprofits, smaller nonprofits, to provide a lot of the resources and services that the community needs. One of the biggest challenge has been insurance coverage for those that we enter into agreements. I would like this council and the administration, if not this administration, the new administration, to really figure out how we can provide more clarity and lower the barriers that exist for these nonprofits to be able to enter into agreements. I know it's been a point of frustration, not only for my office, but also for a couple of the other committee members. But it'd probably be good to have a workshop on this issue. So all the council is well aware of the requirements and maybe the fact that we have to ask our insurer, insurer for some flexibility when it makes sense. I understand, you know, ensuring that the city is covered from any liability, but I also think that we can't just be, we, we need to find some flexibility. That's, that's all I'll say. So I'm hoping that folks from the administration are listening and hoping that they can either do a workshop. I know that in the COVID-19 committee, we're going to be talking about some of those expectations and requirements. But let's really figure out how we can make it easier to partner up with some of the small CBOs that we have been doing COVID-19 work with, without making it such a onerous process. Thank you.
Councilmember Carvaz, you have the floor.
Thank you. Lots to discuss, but we have a long meeting ahead of ourselves, so I'll just keep my comments short. I was really moved by the comments of the Vice President and Larry, especially about the tragedy at Christmas Tree Lane, and I also want to offer my support and my office will be matching those donations for the family as well as for Toys for Tots. Thank you very much.
Council Vice President Caprillo.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank again the administration, you know, I'm running out of time, but my projects are moving along. Brian Russell to Wilma, to Nathan Sanchez, I could go on and on. Aldi, there's just a great group that's helping me close the year out with as much success as possible. Speaking of success, Operation Gobble, our fourth annual Operation Gobble was a huge success. I wanted to thank the many sponsors. In fact, I'm going to turn my video over here. Hopefully you can see that. That's one of the posters and there are the sponsors. So I wanted to thank the, all these sponsors and the volunteers and the city staff, Public Works, Fresno Northeast Police Department, the Parks Department, COVID team in particular, Aaron, because he came out to Wesley Church and made sure we were absolutely COVID-protected in this whole process. And that was over 600 complete Thanksgiving dinners we gave out that day. Also, assist teens, assist teens were incredible. They worked really hard until the very last family picked up their dinner box. These young teens, there's like 130, 135 showed up. They're passionate about volunteering. They want to make a difference in our city. They want to make a difference in, in the lives of the people of Fresno. So I'm really, really proud of them and Kim Shahadi, who coordinated all that with us. By the way, they baked or bought 600 pumpkin pies to be included in the Thanksgiving meal. We couldn't do this event without the continued support of Wesley Church and Pastor Karen Stoffler's pew. They've been remarkable. Can't thank them enough. And lastly, to thank the organizations in schools that helped us identify the families that were in particular need this year and needed the extra help that these dinners provided for them. So thanks to everyone involved. By the way, our safer meal was distributed that day. And that was around the corner from Wesley Church, and that was 500 senior meals delivered that day. So last Tuesday, we serviced approximately dinners for 4,000 people. It's not me or my office, it's all the people that have become involved, all the people that have touched us over the last four years. And I can't thank them enough. They're the ones that deserve the credit for the success of Operation Gobble. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, I'll be brief. I want to thank all our first responders, folks that are out there. I think we've all seen the numbers as they're surging here in Fresno, Fresno County. And I just wanted to thank them from our partners at UCSF to United Health Centers that have really been the spear of this whole pandemic challenge that we faced. The CBOs that have been working hard, sometimes 24/7 in helping our, our families in need. And I think by the lines that we've seen at the testing sites and the food giveaways, the need is great. And as some of you know, I have family members that work in the hospitals. It's a pretty scary time for them right now as they bring in high numbers of folks that unfortunately have COVID. And as we all know, some of those health workers are becoming infected themselves. And I think the, the mental process that they have to go through when they come home and have to, in their eyes, disinfect and make sure they don't bring anything into their households has been really challenging. I had a Zoom call with some nurses yesterday and got a little bit of insight as to what they're seeing. But I just want to urge our folks to take preventative measures. The more we can do that, the less numbers we'll see in our local hospitals. But I just wanted to thank them publicly because I think oftentimes they do a lot of the hard work behind the scenes and sometimes the difficult work that goes on behind those walls of our, of our local hospitals and clinics and medical providers. And I just wanted to thank them and acknowledge their, their work. It's going to get tough. They know that, we know that. But I think at the end of the day, we do see some light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine, with what's coming down the pipeline with treatment plans. But I think right now we're, we're in crunch time and we really need them, really need them to, to help us and continue doing what, what they have been doing. And I want to thank Dr. Vora. I want to thank Dave Palmerville. I know they take some heat oftentimes, but I know that they've been working 24/7. It's not an easy job. I don't think there's any city across the country that has been, has done a perfect job or 100%. I don't think that's possible in the middle of a pandemic, but they've been very helpful in, not just working with us, but in rallying the troops, the medical providers out there. They do a lot of work behind the scenes and oftentimes that's not seen by policymakers, and maybe it shouldn't. But I just wanted to thank them and take this opportunity that, you know, we're, we're approaching the last lap here. But we're going to come out of this and it's going to be much better next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Brederfeld?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Sparza?
Yes, well said, Councilmember Chavez. Hardly agree. Also wanted to acknowledge the loss in our community. This past Tuesday, young Anton Solario, five years old, unfortunately lost his life. The accident leading into Christmas Tree Lane. And so I know my family and I are heartbroken. I hugged my own daughter just a little bit tighter that night before going to bed. And wanted to more publicly send my condolences to the family and our heart goes out to them. And I do want to thank all of the different city staff and departments who stepped up their efforts following that tragedy. Make sure that we're preventing any of those accidents from, doing our best to prevent those accidents from happening again. That'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza. From my end, I just want to say thank you to everyone for staying safe out there. As a reminder, you know, the reports are clear from our public health office and our hospitals. Our ICU beds are now in the single digits in terms of beds available to serve the county of Fresno. We all anticipate it getting worse before it gets better. So we ask people to please follow the, the rules that have been outlined for everyone's safety and that we also just be conscious that, you know, this is going to be hopefully the final, you know, peak of infection that we all have to go work through before we start getting the distribution of vaccines. I also want to thank Valley Children's Hospital for stepping up and being the place where the vaccinations will be hosted and distributed for the valley. We appreciate them stepping up with their modern hospital to, to fight this effort and getting everybody vaccines when they become available. And, and thank my councilmember colleague Chavez for always, you know, reminding everyone that, you know, farmworkers should also be at the forefront as essential workers. Not only are they the most vulnerable, but they also have no other choice but to show up to work every day. And unlike us, they can zoom their way into their responsibilities. So thank you to Councilmember Chavez for that, and I do hope that Governor and the folks that have to make tough decisions on who gets a vaccine first are front and center on those concerns that those of us who are maintaining the national food supply chain, those of us who are putting food on folks' table also deserve to be protected early on and as soon as possible. With that, council, we're going to go ahead and proceed to closed session. City manager, we have the one item in closed session related to the negotiations on the property. Is city staff available to participate in the closed session at this time?
I believe so. And I, if I could quickly address Councilmember Soria's comment, I just wanted to let you know that I did confirm that we do have a wreath and the trees are decorated in front of City Hall, very similar to what we've done last year. So I just confirmed that with Scott Mosher, and we've also worked closely with the Downtown Fresno Partnership, and they have a Christmas tree up right now at Mariposa and Fulton.
Thank you. All right, council. With that, we will go to closed session. City Attorney, please read the closed session matter and we'll see.
Your property negotiation concerning 1444 West White Avenue. And Councilmember Brederfeld is recusing himself onto this due to a potential conflict. He will not be participating.
Great. And thank you, legal counsel, for making sure that you identify any conflicts for the council. And that is your role, and we appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
All right, back in session.
All right, let me see if I have everyone on board. Councilwoman Soria, can you pop up your video? Want to confirm we can count to seven? Councilmember Sparza, are you pulling Councilmember Chavez? There you are.
Who are you talking about? I've been, I've been here. I was asking for you.
Been here.
Yeah, we've been chatting.
Yes, you have. All right, council, we are officially back in open session at 10:41. Legal counsel, is there any action to report from closed session?
No.
All right, thank you. We've already gone to public comment on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
I, I did have one last game changer. I wanted to pull item 1J for discussion.
1J? Okay.
I'll second Council President, Council Vice President's motion.
All right, sounds good. So council, just for the record, we are going to approve the consent calendar without 1C, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1J, 1K, 1O, 1P, all those will be discussed separately. There's a motion.
Is there some, this white matter that you did in closed session, is there anything related to that on consent for me that I need to recuse myself?
Yes.
Unless it has separate discussion, Councilmember Brederfeld just announced that, yes, you have a recusal on that item.
Okay, so I just want the city clerk to be aware I'm refusing myself on that.
Thank you.
City clerk, let's make sure that the record notes that Councilmember Brederfeld has recused himself from the purchase of the property, 1444 West White Avenue in Fresno, California, 93728. City Attorney, before we go to consent, there was some discussion about a potential conflict of interest on item 1D that was voted on to be tabled. Is there any clarification you'd like to provide on whether there's a conflict of interest for any council member on that item?
No, it was said that Councilmember Soria had a conflict. There's, there's no conflict when the council is considering importance of citywide application.
Okay. All right, now that we have the recusals and the conflicts clarified, there's a motion by Member Council Vice President Caprillo, second by Member Sparza, to adopt the amended consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brederfeld? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carvaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caprillo?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. All right, council, now we'll do contested consent. We will do them in order. The first one is item 1C as in cat for the benefit of the public. This is related to awarding a parking facilities management service contract to Ace Parking. Is city, is our director of parking available?
Yes, Thomas is available. Can you let him in?
City clerk, we got Thomas registered here?
Yep, I see him.
All right, Thomas, I pulled the item. Thomas, I just wanted to say thank you for finally bringing the city of Fresno to the iPhone version of parking in our downtown. And I want to give you an opportunity just to summarize what this contract means in terms of our parking, you know, standard and customer service for our residents who use parking in downtown Fresno.
Absolutely. Good morning, Council President Arias, Vice President Caprillo, council members, Thomas Gaffrey, Deputy City Manager here for the Parking Division. So this contract is for our off-street parking garage operator. This, these are the folks who operate the garages such as the Underground Garage, Convention Center Garage, Spiral Garage on the city's behalf. And so we're excited with this new operator so we can start to continue some of the momentum you've seen with our on-street operations moving forward into our garages. And we're really looking to this operator to help us modernize with technology in that facility in the future as well as bring some upgraded standards to maintenance and custodial and upkeep of the facilities to enhance the vibrancy of downtown. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Director. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All right, Councilwoman Soria?
Just, Thomas, wanted to see if you could give us a little bit of background because I believe Ace Parking at some point was our operator years ago. The current operator is just not cutting it.
Yeah, Ace Parking was the operator, I believe, from the contract. SP Plus has been the operator since 2015. Prior to that, it was Ace, which is before Dan Zach or myself or others were here managing the program. And so we, the Ace Management Team that's coming in is different than the folks that were managing the program previously. And so we just saw a number of ongoing challenges that we had with the current operator relative to expectations and upkeep and the amount of time that city staff had to spend engaged with the operator, where you would expect them to be performing much more independently for the value of the contract that we're awarding. So that's what we're really hoping for with Ace.
What was the value that we had previously with SP? Because I know that for this five-year contract is thirteen million. How much has it increased?
I'd have to get that number for you. I don't have that number in front of me. It's of a similar magnitude. And again, I was talking about the value of the services and some of those things where they weren't meeting our expectations, not necessarily the dollar amount.
I totally understand that, but the dollar amount is also extremely critical. So it's not just about the service, it's about the dollar amount. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that we are transparent and for the public to actually know what is it that we were paying before? What are we paying, what are we going to pay over the next five years? What else are we getting above and beyond that we weren't getting from SP? That it makes it worth going to Ace? Because I think for me, it wasn't that as clear. That's why I wanted to ask you these questions publicly because I think that it is fair that the public knows those answers. Is there any way that we can get that information before we take a vote? I think it's critical information. I don't know if anyone else cares, but I do.
Yeah, give me one, let me give me one second and I can see if I can get that for you.
Let's go to other questions in the meantime. Okay, Councilmember Chavez?
Yep, Thomas, thank you for meeting with me. Appreciate the background info. And I had some of the same questions that Councilmember Soria did. Because I do remember that Ace was our vendor a couple of years back. And I remember the conversation on why we switched from Ace to this new vendor that we're now switching back to Ace. So if you could walk the council through, I know everybody just kind of, you know, simplifies it and says, hey, they're doing parking management, but can you explain what exact services they're going to be providing?
Absolutely. So that's all of the day-to-day services that you see in the garage. So the staff that are attending the booths, the porters that are doing trash picking and day-to-day custodial and pressure washing and a lot of those physical components. And then all of the permit management and customer service relative to the folks that are our customers. And so with that, that includes all of our county contracts and all of our private individuals who are purchasing permits from us. And they manage all of those relationships and the bookkeeping component and that value. And then we'll be leaning on Ace as our new operator to help us move forward with a modernization of some of those technologies in the future.
Sure. And I did, and I did read some of that language you're referencing, Thomas, in there. The question I had is before the, one of the issues that was raised a couple of years ago, five years ago, I believe, or six, was that the parking manager did not really integrate what was going on with the P-Bid downtown and, you know, kind of promoting some of the events. I believe part of their, part of their job or part of their agreement was to provide folks with kind of a little cheat sheet that the P-Bid would put together for upcoming events, festivities, celebrations, some businesses to support. Is that, are those provisions within this current agreement to kind of promote the downtown as people are coming in and parking and paying for that service?
And those are things that we're doing currently from the Parking Division along with SP Plus, and we're going to continue to transition those. So we have regular parking and safety update meetings with the P-Bid. I'm engaged in a number of different P-Bid meetings. And then when events and those types of things are going on downtown, we're actively engaging both Parking Division staff and Ace as the operator will be working with the P-Bid on those to help enhance those events and make parking easy and understandable downtown.
So to be clear, you're saying that city staff are going to be working with Ace to promote what I just described? And so walk me through what that would look like. So, you know, folks come in, they punch their ticket, and there's a attendant there at the booth. Does that attendant from Ace do that? Or how does the city?
Yeah, the attendant from Ace operates all of that, those parking activities. And then the things that we would do, like, for example, when there's Freshest Fest or a large-scale event, we're working, both the city and Ace as the parking garage operator, with the Downtown Fresno Partnership to understand when is the event, what volume of people they expect, so we can staff accordingly, making sure they have extra staffing for custodial and directing visitors downtown and that kind of stuff is the things that Ace, the operator, would do.
Okay, and so along those lines, and I understand when we have big events and we have, you know, these promotions coming up, what about the regular marketing and promotion of the local businesses down there? Do they have something ready to go for them as people are coming in and using the parking facilities?
There's some of those things that the partnership already prepares, and we can certainly work with Ace when we onboard them to get that relationship more enhanced between Ace and the P-Bid and build those connections.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of that language incorporated in. I know that was pretty helpful last time, Thomas. And what I'm thinking is now that we have a lot more businesses down there and possibly making that, you know, maybe initially free for the business where they can promote their business and say, hey, you know, we'll give you ten percent off to come in to take three or cockies or, you know, some kind of promotion for Tyoga Beer or Modernist. I think that would help those businesses as we kind of come out of the pandemic and get folks to support them somehow. Because we get a lot of traffic down there, but oftentimes people don't know about the local restaurants that are there. I like to see some of that included into.
Yeah, we can, we can draft something to include language like that in the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thomas, I had a couple other questions on the attachments that you provided for the staff report.
Yes.
There are two, there are two scores. There's the top scores and I think between our current operator and our proposed new operator, which he's a, which they are our former operator too. The difference seems to be three points, but then in the second level, it, there's a much wider spread, which is seventeen points. Is that the interview section or what? What's the distinction?
Give me one second while I look at my note on that for you. It was, it was just for the staff's review. It was two different ways that we were looking at the scoring of the proposals and and how we were analyzing it. But this, that number that you see is just based on the initial read of the proposal before we did the interview.
Okay, so that's the sixty versus sixty-three and then there's a sixty versus seventy-seven. So the, our original or our current operator didn't get any points during their interview.
Correct, correct. Or what it is, is the transition plan because the current operator wouldn't have provided any information on a transition plan since they're already the current operator.
So that's why they got less points?
Well, we're showing, we're showing them what it would look like if that wasn't calculated in there. So it was just for staffs, when staff were analyzing it.
That's a little confusing. Then, other question on the, the allocated dollars in the budget?
Yes.
So there's a pretty, because I was looking at the bids and it's a pretty widespread. It's all the way from seven million to.
Yes, and I can walk you through kind of some of those differences in price on the lower-priced proposals, if you like.
My only question to you was going to be, so, because I'm trying to figure out, does that thirteen million match up with con? You know, is it similar to what we've been doing? Otherwise, if the value has, you know, significantly increased, I want to know, you know, what are those other things that the customers in the city will get? That's what's.
And I need to get that number from staff. I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me right now. Of the current value of the part of what we're paying right now for both downtown and Parks Parking with this, the current contract.
And then of, of the current value of the contract that you guys are proposing, we approve. What, what percentage of it or what's the number that it comes from general fund? I know a lot of it is revenue generated through.
The part, the portion for the Parking Division is entirely general fund.
So the whole thirteen million?
There's a portion of it as well that is for regional parks, and I'd have to ask if you give that number.
I'd like to also know that breakdown. So I don't know, can we come back to this, Council President, when we have all this information?
Actually, my, my, that, Councilwoman, let me move on to the next series of consent calendar, contested consent. And Thomas, you'll probably have an hour minimum, maybe after lunch to get some additional information for us. So for now, let's table a vote on this item and we'll go to the next contested consent calendar item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. The next one is item one E, Councilmember Carbasi. That's your item. Councilman Carbasi, you're on mute.
Council President, did we vote on the parking deal? I stepped away.
No, we didn't. We're going to table that until we get some additional information from staff later this afternoon.
So we're going to vote on it today rather than go through all this again?
Yes, we're going to vote on it today. We'll just put at the tail end of the consent items that are contested.
Thank you.
I'm going to motion to approve this item, but I do want to make one quick point before doing so. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I understand the Melbourne and Dakota project is west of ninety-nine. I just want to emphasize how important it is to have a park and park space west of ninety-nine. And believe it or not, some people don't realize this, but my district includes part of west of ninety-nine, and it's a very active community and they're very passionate about having more resources and shopping opportunities out there as well as park space and green space. So I like, I like that we're moving in that direction, but I just want to make it very clear, coming next year, I'm going to be pushing for Prop sixty-eight money for parts of my district that are disadvantaged. With that, I'm ready to move forward.
All right, there's a motion.
I'll take in that, Council, Council President, and can I make a comment?
You have a comment, Councilwoman, before the vote?
Yes. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Carbasi, for noting the Melbourne and Dakota Park that my office has been working with the Parks Department very diligently in this last year to try to get it to that design level. We had a tremendous community outreach, believe it or not, even during COVID. We had hundreds of people participating. We did drive-through events to, to try to encourage community participation. And we're in the final phase of design, and so we're excited to be able to partner up with our Parks Department to get this through. I know that the, the application process is not due, or the applications are not due till March. The only question that I did have, I do have two parks that I've been working on. It's the west of the ninety-nine one, Melbourne and Dakota, and also the renovation of Quigley Park. And obviously, I'm extremely excited about it. The only thing that I am concerned is, I guess, I don't know how the process works. Are we essentially competing, you know, against ourselves if we submit for? Or how does the process work for anyone in the Parks Department? I don't know if they're on the line that they could speak to.
Director Miller, are you available or City Manager?
Yes, and I have Jim Shad here who can answer the question too, and TJ is on as well.
TJ just joined us, but my understanding is it is a competitive process and that all applications will be reviewed on their own merits against specific criteria in the grant. And we will be competing against all of the projects that are submitted statewide, including our own.
Perfect. And the only other thing that I had a request of staff, if we can circle back on the, I know that we've been busy kind of on the Melbourne and Dakota, but the Quigley renovation one is going to be important that we make some adjustments or improvements so that we're competitive because this is the second time applying for it. I just want to make sure that we make any adjustments that were recommended by the state of California.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. We are making those adjustments, and then we also are going to be further along in the environmental assessments. In fact, I think they'll be completed at time of application, which will also be an edge up for us.
Perfect. Thank you so much, TJ, for that update. I appreciate working with you guys.
All right, the motion's been made by Member Carbasi. I've seconded. Is there, let's do roll call.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry, my hands up.
Go ahead.
I'm glad that we have Director Miller on here. Folks may not know, but a couple of months ago, she and I went out to see some park sites in District Two. And I got to see firsthand, despite everything you have to do with COVID and handling the emergency, TJ, you are very responsive and exceptionally passionate about parks. I, I can feel that, and I really do appreciate the contributions you've made to this city this past year, not only with our parks forum, but with COVID and everything. So I really appreciate your service, TJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just last question, TJ. I do believe this is the last year of Prop sixty-eight, right? This is the last round of Prop sixty-eight in the state?
Yes, it is the last round. And as you'll recall, they had, the original deadline was August, and they moved that to December, and now they moved it to March. So we are anticipating March to be the date, but we're also quite aware that it could be extended again based on the pandemic.
So just a fair notice for the council, as we try to build more parks and fix the existing parks, we're probably going to have to revisit, revisit the Measure P conversation versus waiting for another round of Prop sixty-eight because that, that ship is sailing in this, in this fast, in this last sale.
Mr. President, just to clarify, Measure P has failed, so the question is, what's the next measure to get parks and public safety and everything back on track?
Yeah, I don't want to get into the Measure P debate, but I will reiterate what Councilmember, President Arias said in that Prop sixty-eight dollars are capital dollars, and they, they can't not be used for maintenance. So we really need to look at how we are going to support the ongoing maintenance for additional parks.
Agreed. All right, there is a motion, a second. Let's do roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caprillo?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. Next item is one F, as in Frank. Councilmember Carbasi, you pulled the item.
Just a real quick question. I did have a chance to speak with Legal Counsel yesterday. We, we have a, and this may be, may be for Mr. Shad. We can't, the subcontractor we're replacing for this project, which is up to the main contractor, is a company based out of Bakersfield. Now, we've said before, we really do prefer that we use local hires as much as possible, and we keep the tax base within our county and our city. But just to be clear, we actually cannot, we don't have the legal authority or ability to substitute it with someone within Fresno County.
Well, my, Scott's going to join us hopefully in a second, but my understanding of this is this is not us substituting a contractor. It is the contractor substituting a subcontractor, and they have full control over who they select based on their processes. But when they substitute, we have to approve that.
Right, and I, the, the point I want to make is for anyone watching that, that does contract work for the city is, and I, I think this is fair to say, the council is very, very serious about trying to employ as many people locally. I know Bakersfield was within, you know, in, in the general area where we are, and I appreciate their, that they're, that they're a part of this, the central part of California, but our tax base is just here. So I just want to make that point. Now, City Attorney, when I, when we, when we decide to vote on this, this type of substitution, which happens all the time, I, we cannot consider that as a part of our decision-making. Is that my understanding?
Right, the subcontractor should be approved if they're qualified, and whether or not they're local is not necessarily a qualification.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
And.
City Attorney, can I add to that? City Attorney, can I add to that?
Go ahead.
I just wa- I just wanted to um ask though, can't we establish as a matter of policy, uh, policy that would, you know, when we're approving the general contracting, contractor that they hire local folks?
Uh, we can look into that potentially, uh particularly if state or federal funds are not involved in uh the funding for the project.
In this one, it's the fire station, um, which is in District One and there, there is no federal funding to my knowledge.
Does it all impact, impact fees or general fund?
Yeah, so I think it's a matter of policy.
Right, but we've not yet established that policy, so it might.
Yeah, but I think it, we should make it clear so that I think as Councilmember Carbasi mentioned, folks that are gonna bid um for future projects, that that's a big interest of ours, because we have reiterated that over and over. And so maybe it's, it's a matter of us putting it in, on paper so that folks know that that's, you know, some of our policy.
Right, we can work on a policy for you.
I think, I, it's fair to say, Councilmember Soria and I are gonna work on that, yes? With legal counsel to change that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it looks like we have some consensus on um the two councilmembers.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion bay my member Soria, second my member Carbasi. Any other questions from the council on this item?
Does, I think the Assistant City Manager had a comment. Did you need to say anything, sir?
Oh, no, um, uh, Count.
Thank you, Jim.
The attorney clarified.
Thank you.
Federal and state dollars uh would probably preclude this.
All right, thank you, Jim. We'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Bretafeld? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arius?
Yes. All right, council, we're gonna go a little out of order, cuz I know the mayor wanted to be here for one G, the animal shelter, so we're just gonna give the mayor officially a notice that we'll be discussing that item next. Is he, is he coming back?
He's actually on right now.
There you are, Mayor. I didn't see you there. All right, Mayor, then we can stay on order. Um, the next item is one G. I pulled the item, council, um, cuz I, we, I have received a lot of questions on the two change orders and the increase in the cost for the animal shelter. And as you all know, this is probably one of the most important capital projects we have in our city, given that we're all pet lovers. Um, officially, our incoming councilmember, um, Maxwell, so I wanted to give the mayor and staff an opportunity just to give us an overview on uh the reason for the change order and the quick update on the progress of the project. And we'll hand it off to the mayor or to uh staff.
Well, I'll start with this. This is, you know, an, an ongoing project for the last two years. I wanna thank Councilmember Soria and Bretafeld, they were involved from the inception with Laura Gloria and the later Aldi on trying to find a facility. And uh, we've got a, we were the benefit from a gift, Darryl Ridenhour, his plans to build the facility that never was built by ninety-nine and uh, we're counting. So that was probably worth about a million dollars for us. And then Tim Simon came in, and the, and the original contract that was approved by the council was fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. And that, based on conversations I've had previously, in fact, ones we actively, actively looked at, was substantially lower. We had one that we're gonna, was smaller, that we're gonna remodel, that was like fifteen, sixteen million dollars. So this is a progressive design build, it's not a standard design build. What this is doing, when we, that bid came in, it was based on a non-site-specific bid. In other words, we didn't know where that footprint was gonna go in Western ninety-nine, gonna go in, in the Gap or other locations. Eventually, we took, we got the gift from the Gap, but save us a time. We appreciate the gap for their, uh, generous donation. So this puts in items that, for example, offsite costs that are specific, site-specific to this uh Gap project. So that adds, and that brings that up to about two point four million dollars to, to about seventeen point two million dollars. So that is gonna be the contract itself, seventeen point two million dollars. And Jim will come after me and show you a, a chart and make it really easy to follow. So one, we're doing that to align it with the actual cost for the facility and I, in my opinion, seventeen-one is a bargain. The council has approved a bonding limit up to twenty-two million dollars. The other part we're doing is roughly about three point five, three point six million dollars. These are personal items, like the vehicles for the place, the cameras, the equipment, the, the veterinary lab to do spay and neuters. We have two choices. We could not include that, then it's twenty-year, probably low interest rate bond, but have to pay that money in cash either in twenty, or twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. So it makes sense to incorporate those kinda costs, the, you know, the IT costs, et cetera, once, et cetera, equipment in the bond itself amortized over twenty, I'm guessing roughly twenty years. So that brings the total cost, counting the personal items that could be done separately, at about twenty point eight million dollars. That leaves about one point two million dollars in contingency, which should be sufficient. And this would start in roughly early next year, completing by the end of two thousand twenty-one. So Jim, why don't you take it from there and give them the detail?
I'm gonna have Aldi pull up a, a one pager here. So Mayor did a good job of describing uh things, but I think it's oftentimes easier to see on, on paper. Uh, so I'll walk through this uh costing analysis uh that uh Scott and his folks have been heavily involved in. And uh, we've tried to make it look, or provide something that's easy to follow. So uh, when we first started this project, uh, we were looking to do this in a conventional manner and pricing on animal shelters of this size, uh, we saw uh from other agencies was running between twenty and forty thousand dollars, uh, or, excuse me, forty million dollars. Um, most of them uh on the higher end. Uh, we, we had started down that path, but found that uh we could potentially work with the uh, the contractor to do that uh much cheaper. He, he provided us a price. Um, the original cost estimate was based on the original county plans that he had worked on. They were site-specific. They had no veterinary clinic. Uh, they didn't have any uh low voltage, voltage systems installed, and I'll explain that in a minute. And uh, some of the uh portable-type kennels, uh, non-built-in kennels were not included in that price. So when we, uh, we uh move forward based on council's approval, our first change order was really just to add uh the typical, a couple of typical s- uh city imposed requirements for dispute, dispute review and supplemental work. That's the three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, so uh, now we're at change order two after we've done significant analysis and redesign and um that change order really uh is, is caused by a few uh items. The first items I've, I've categorized as city-driven, meaning that we've added stuff to this. And, and so most of these items that we've added are items that were going to be purchased separately using bond funding, but not under the construction contract. So the low voltage stuff I was talking about earlier are the communications, phone and data system, intrusion detection, card access, lighting controls, cameras and such. Those are all items we had in- intended to install separately, but it made sense to have the contractor do it. Um, the medical-grade cabinetry is part of uh the addition of a veterinary clinic, cuz the original plans, uh, I want everybody to understand, did not have a veterinary clinic in, in them. The county had not had that as part of their facility. Um, and then the cat condo kennels are really just uh some kennels that we would intend, intended to buy separately as well. Um, the second group of item, and that totals almost a million dollars. Uh, the second group of items is uh site-specific items. We knew there would be some uh potential changes based on uh the selection of the site or offsite improvements that were never included in the contract cost. We always expected to have to pay for those uh somehow separately. You can see an additional onsite storm drain that wasn't required in the original plans. Uh, some street light, light re- locations based on where the property or the, the facility is being built. Offsite street work and then uh some additional parking. The original uh county facility did not have as much parking as we're asking for, public parking specifically. Um, last item, which is our typical uh market-driven uh escalation. And, and that's the escalation we've seen with most every project, uh, public or private, uh, that continues to happen. And that totaled almost a million dollars. So uh, once we got through with all of the city-driven changes, site-specific changes and ex, ex uh escalation, uh, the change order came out to about two point four million dollars, bringing the con- construction cost up to seventeen point two million. Uh, the mayor had mentioned additional costs, which we had always uh in- intended to roll into the bond and that's uh one of the reasons uh we are funding a bond at, or, or asking for a bond of twenty-two million is because we always knew there would be some additional costs beyond the construction. Uh, you can see our typical soft cost, uh, project management, PG&E, uh, purchasing and legal, construction management. That totals about a million dollars, uh, which is right in line with what we would usually expect. And then we have some non-construction items. Uh, Mayor had indicated those are personal items, but uh, vehicles and equipment are one of the big dollar items, computers, printers, phones, portable cages, desk furniture, and then uh veterinary clinic equipment. Uh, the non-construction items total about two point seven. That brings the total amount to, as the mayor said, uh, a little under uh twenty-one million. Uh, our bond is for twenty-two, leaving us a remaining contingency of about one point two million. So uh, I feel we're tracking fairly well relative to our budget um, that we had originally planned for in the twenty uh two million dollar range. Happy to answer any questions. And we have Scott on the line if you would like any detail.
I'm, I'm gonna go to the council for questions. Is there any councilmembers um having questions on this item?
Yes.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
I'll defer to Councilmember Bretafeld and then I'll answer.
First, and then Councilwoman Soria.
Couple of quick questions, Jim. So on this second change, they had a lot of equipment and uh things of that sort uh that wasn't in the original um proposal. So I'm, I'm just concerned, is there any unanticipated costs now? Is this, does this cover it? Um, they should, are there anticipated to be any additional amendments other than what we've gotten today?
I don't expect any significant additional amendments. Councilmember Bretafeld, uh, with that being said, you know, there are always unknowns and we're at the beginning of this construction. So as we move forward, uh, we may have some additional items, but uh keeping in mind, and Scott can uh weigh in on this if necessary, this is a design build, so if there are design deficiencies uh that, that cause construction changes, those should not be our responsibility, which, which helps us. Um, that would be the contractor's responsibility typically. So if, I, I don't anticipate any large changes. I think we've accounted for everything. Yeah.
That, that's all I'm concerned about, because thi- this one had, you know, X-ray machines and medical tables and surgery equipment, which I would thought we would've kind of included that initially. So it's all in there. We shouldn't have anymore. I understand, you know, for the design.
Yeah, and, and Councilmember Bretafeld, um, some of that stuff is in there because it was just more advantageous to have the contractor purchase those. We would've had to purchase those anyway, uh, using the bond funding. It's just a matter of who's buying the stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I just have, I wanna follow up on a couple of questions and um I know Councilmember Bretafeld and myself were kind of part of the subcommittee that um was dealing with these efforts with the mayor and the administration on bringing this forward. I am extremely concerned. I, I understand some of the rationale for the increase in cost. Um, but I think that this is an example, again, an unfortunate example of, you know, that we had to proceed quickly because of um, you know, threats of being um left without a provider and um, and so this would give us an opportunity to have our own facility and a new provider. But I think that when we encounter these situations and moving forward with this project, I think that we need to be very cautious and, and prudent with the taxpayer money. You know, I, I know that we, you guys say, oh, well, it's not gonna go over the twenty million, the twenty-two million dollar that we are bonding for or whatnot. At the end of the day, that's someone's money. Um, you know, it, it is the people's money and I wanna make sure that we're prudent as we move forward and that we're very transparent with the council. You know, I was a bit surprised that part of the vision of, of the shelter kinda changed. I remember when we were first talking about it, that it was simply gonna be dogs. I have nothing against cats and I think that um, you know, I, I've talked to my chief of staff, who is a cat lover, and she does mention that there is a plus to adding the cats um, uh, or having a facility that takes in cats, because there are grants that we could apply for um in our community um for spay and neuter to control the populations that we know we have in the city of Fresno. So I know that that's a plus, but I think that we have to be very mindful as we move forward. Um, I will reluctantly, I will say, support the change order today. Um, but I think that it's gonna be important that either we have some additional oversight. One of the things that is gonna be actually uh for me in order to, and I can make the motion if no one else has made the motion to support this, but that we actually hire a qualified construction manager. That for me is extremely critical. We need to make sure that we are accounting for every single dollar. I don't wanna be in this and say, oh, well, we have a million dollars in, in the ability to, you know, in, in wiggle room. Well, I don't wanna have to spend those million dollars if we don't have to. And I think having a qualified construction manager um, like we've had in with other big projects that we've done, is gonna be extremely critical. Um, so that would be my motion. I'd accept um the change order with that addition um to the project.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'd like to know what uh, what uh J- Jim or the administration says in terms of the oversight that uh Councilmember Soria is alluding to. I mean, we wanna have that oversight. Does that exist now or do we need to pay?
All right, allow me to go, uh, council, allow me to go to the mayor first and then to Assistant City Manager uh Jim, and then back to the councilmembers who have their hands raised.
Okay, first of all, this is with Tim Simons and the Queering Corporation. The Queering Corporation is probably one of the largest uh corporate, construction, commercial construction companies in central California. I'd say their level of expertise would be pretty high on, on their list. Uh, the other thing is on this, this whole thing of COVID is a different world. If you talk to bu- builders right now, the cost of lumber has went up three hundred percent in the last six months. There's a lot of uncertainty. Initially, when these, we looked at cost, I go back even three or four years ago, was it with then Supervisor Henry Pareja and meeting with uh Darryl Ridenhour. They were looking at cost thirty, forty, fifty million dollars. So Tim Simons came into this deal, you know, early, about a year or so ago. It was really a substantial reduction of what we thought we would do. I think it's still a bargain. I do understand the concern about contro- cost controls and so on. And I made the decision to put all this stuff in one deal instead of doing it over two der- two or three different change orders, so you don't have to have that. But putting this equipment in the, the bond itself makes a lot of sense, because you're amortizing over a low interest rate, because the city has a good credit rating, because city has a reserve, Miguel. That's, anyway, I understand, I think the corporation here, I think we have a lot of oversight, but I'll, I'll leave it to the council. Jim, you wanna add anything?
Sure. Um, uh, to Councilmember Bretafeld's question, um, this project is, is, does have both project management and construction management resource uh under Scott's uh department assigned to it. Uh, the project manager is one of our facilities folks. Uh, he has spent a significant amount of time managing both the project schedule and the costs and has worked very closely with the um contractor and design engineers to, to uh detail those costs out. Uh, the, the uh process we've been going through is a typical project management process, where as we move forward, uh, costs are better defined as well as schedules. Um, our construction management folks, uh, they have a different role. Their role is not so much managing the project overall from a cost and. Their role is not so much managing the project overall from a cost and, um, schedule standpoint, but more so to make sure that the project is built as planned and, uh, all code and, local code and state code and prevailing wage items as such are met. Uh, so I feel we have sufficient resources on the project to manage it, um, and what I see is typically, once we get to this point where we're past design, uh, and have identified most of the unknowns, the project moves forward fairly straightforward and, and through completion and construction. Um, I, I think, uh, we are past that point of dealing with the major unknowns, and that's why we would typically have a 10% de- design contingency on any project we do, in addition to a 10% contingency for construction. Um, I'm not sure Scott wanted to add more to that or not.
Yes, uh, good morning, council. Uh, Scott Moser Public Works just wanted to add, uh, yes, we do have a very solid construction management team, uh, it's that very team that successfully delivered, uh, major projects like Southeast PD Substation at 6 million, Fire Station 18, uh, we just with our own staff, we've managed, uh, about, uh, two, uh, Public Utilities Project, the Northeast Tank, about 12 million, and the, uh, Downtown Recycled Water, uh, that one also over 10 million. Uh, so we're, we run about 80 projects at a given time, uh, the team, the makeup for this would be very similar to, uh, Southeast PD or Fire Station 18, uh, but, uh, you know, with an extra staff member involved. So with that, uh, we, we are not seeing the need for a, hiring a consultant, uh, to perform those services, and, uh, we're very committed to this as a higher priority project to stay on, on track and, and within budget.
I would wanna make one other, uh, comment, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Bretafell's questions. I, I think the construction is, it, now that we have the design fairly well so- solidified is probably the, the, uh, smallest risk. Um, the, the ancillary items that were outside of the construction, that would be where I would turn our next concern in that we've never done an animal shelter, operating it, uh, before. So, there may be some unaccounted items, uh, in, in the non-construction area that hopefully we haven't missed, but I would say that's a higher risk than the construction itself.
Jim, and thank you for, for answering that, um, Councilmember Bretafell's, um, question and addressing some of my concerns. I think that, that, that's where my concern comes from in terms of the expertise. I know that Scott Moser's team has managed many, many projects, you know, from infrastructure projects to fire stations, but those are the kind of everyday type of projects that the city of Fresno, um, does, and so I just wanted to make sure, I know that we've been working with UC Davis to get their expertise. Um, as we've seen though, the design has cha- uh, changed somewhat, right? And, and we're adding some additional, um, things within the, the change order, like you mentioned, it, it makes more sense for the contractor to add some of the, the actual cabinetry and the medical, um, component and so forth, but I just wanna make sure that it, you know, if Scott Moser feels like he's confident that he has the team with the expertise to be able to, you know, manage, um, you know, as the design moves forward, then I, I will take his word. Um, I just hope that we don't come back, you know, six months from now, I'll just remind everyone, I get it, that the price of, of lumber and so forth has gone up, so that's why I said, I'm, I'm gonna support it, but I am still reluctant, because at the end of the day, this is taxpayer money, and we should be very careful as to how we spend every single dollar that we're about to spend. I know that it's necessary because we're mandated to provide animal control services, and we do wanna get to a place where we have a no-kill shelter, which is something that we haven't had here in the city of Fresno. And so I do wanna be able to get there, so that is why I will support, um, today that change order, but again, I, it's, I wanna say that I'm reluctant, uh, you know, with, with the additional, um, cost, but, you know, I wanted to see, see it move forward.
Thank you, member. We'll go to Member Carbasi, then Member Chavez.
I appreciate the, uh, I really do appreciate the perspectives of my colleagues, I have a different perspective, um, I have no difficulty whatsoever in approving this change order. Um, you know, part of the point of oversight is the council gets to ask these tough questions, and that's a great thing. Um, but I just want staff to know, at least from my perspective, I'm very confident that everything that we've been told from the very beginning of this process has come through, and part of the reason why, I'm not a big fan of bonding things out, because I don't wanna tie up general fund money, but part of the advantage of the financial position this city is in despite COVID, and I mean, imagine everything people have been going through, on top of that, we have to build an animal control facility within a timeline, which is very, and it's a very unusual situation, so there's some leeway there with that, but the fact is that we are in a financial position, and because of the reserves, and the mayor kinda beat me to it, where interest rates are low, we can bond out, and the most important point for me is, in the very beginning, we were told we're gonna bond out up to 22 million dollars, and we're below that number, is that correct, Assistant City Manager?
We are tracking at, uh, 22 mil- or, or, under 22 million with about 1.3 million in contingency.
Okay, and that's, that's really my biggest, uh, target for that. Um, I, I don't know if there's, is, there's a need to put an extra layer, I'm always very conscious about, um, taxpayer dollars, because part of it is, as, we all pay taxes, but the family business pays a lot of taxes too, um, and we work hard for that. But I think this is one of those cases where, um, we've been pretty responsible, uh, and I have confidence with the administration's doing. I just wanna know how you guys got a planning permit so fast, 'cause a lot of my friends in the private sector always complain to me. I'm only teasing, but, um, thank you for all your work, and, uh, this is going to be an asset for this city.
All right, Councilmember Chavez, and then we'll go to Bretafell.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, this probably wouldn't be happening, that we would've had a project labor agreement, uh, for this, where the price is set, and I know that the council will be discussing that early next year, um, and we'll be able to hopefully settle all these conversations, uh, going forward. Um, two, um, I, I do support as, as the, as the proud representative of the Huntington and Kirkoff Boulevard, um, cats, um, I do support them having a, a cat, uh, spa area. Um, if I don't say that, I think, uh, as you guys know, my wife would probably kill me, um, but, but, but I'm gonna advocate for equity for the cats, especially the ones from South Fresno, so make sure that we get, um, some space for them, and, and I think this is something that we're all gonna be proud of, to have a, a true no-kill shelter for, for pets, um, in the city of Fresno, I think, you know, that will reflect what the community has wanted. I've received a number of texts and calls about having that, um, uh, no-kill, uh, shelter. I don't, I'm not, I'm sure when, it's not gonna be easy, but I think we'll be able to find some partnerships, um, so I'll, I'll, I'll be supporting this, uh, change order, um, today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bretafell.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, just again echo, I think, uh, Councilmember Soria raised important issues, and that's why I posed the question to the staff, are they able to, to meet, uh, the responsibilities that are required? So we don't have these, uh, kind of issues arise in the future. Uh, Scott, you've outlined it, Jim, you've outlined it, uh, very well, I have total confidence in you, I think you've demonstrated, uh, that, um, uh, you've, you're able to handle all kinds of projects that have come up, and obviously, this is a, a critical, uh, project for all of us and everyone in the city, and I have a feeling it's gonna be something we're all gonna be very proud of, uh, because we know that, uh, there's been challenges in terms of, uh, dealing with, uh, the pet population, uh, out there, and, uh, providing the, the kinds of services, particularly no-kill services that, that we wanna provide, and that's, that's gonna happen, and so, um, I think you've answered the question, I'm very comfortable with, uh, staff, uh, overseeing this and, uh, moving this forward.
I wanted to make one more comment, if possible, um, just, there are some unknowns, particularly on, uh, the uniqueness of running an animal shelter, and, uh, you know, the construction part, I think, uh, we're very capable of, but, uh, that is why we did work with, uh, UC Davis, one of their consultants, Indigo, as well as our local, uh, Fresno Humane folks, to, to really try and understand, uh, what the needs of that shelter would be. So, you know, I, I feel, uh, very confident that with their help, we'll be able to deliver this in a manner that they will be able to operate the facility.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I do have a couple of questions for staff on, on, on this important project, so, um, I appreciate the comments by the mayor about the reserve, um, and our financial standing and our credit rating, um, but I, I do have some concerns with, uh, what were your proposal before us, um, suggest. One, you've included equipment that doesn't have, um, the life cycle of 30 years, which is probably gonna be the bonding commitment to repay this, this cost. W- why would you include equipment, um, and pay for it through a bonding mechanism instead of mayor, um, accessing the reserve, which is available now, and we don't have to pay a 4% interest rate on equipment that's probably gonna last five years before it has to be upgraded?
Well, I can, just a bit of choice, you know, adding, I'm assuming around a 4% rate, maybe lower on the bond, probably 20 years, maybe 15 years. It's, you know, you, you'd have the choice of either coming out of the pocket of roughly 3.5 or 3.6 million dollars, which we don't have right now. If I was a businessman, this was a business proposition, I would, and I got favorable long-term financing, I would take that, that's maybe 100, 200,000 more to an annual payment on a bond, that's probably about 1.5 million dollars. That's a smart thing to do, and you have the present value, future value, okay? And so these are mainly things like equipment, a lab, things we have to go, in a, in a perfect world, if we had enough money, could do it. Based on all the uncertainties out there, uh, Council President, in terms of our economy, I would say would, I'd like to hold that reserve back for those kind of times, particularly with an opportunity to bond at a very favorable rate. There were bonds written not only five, 10 years ago that were double that rate and, and so on, so I think it's, it's the prudent business thing to do, this is a valid question, but I don't think.
I, I, could, could I add a couple of things to that?
Yes, and, and before you do, um, I, I just wanna compare this to other projects. When we build police stations and we build, uh, fire stations, we pay for the equipment out of pocket, we don't bond it out over a 30-year period. So, um, what, what I'm trying to raise to the council's attention is, that we're gonna go into the business of borrowing for, uh, equipment, then we're, we're saying a, a, a new standard that, as long as we're all comfortable, when the next project comes before us, and somebody wants to borrow, say, you know, half a million for the Maxi Parks air conditioner that is gonna be good for maybe 10 years or 15, that staff, staff doesn't come back and say, bonding is not a good idea, let's, you know, wait five years to have enough cash to pay for it then, so, i- if, if you're guys comfortable borrowing money for equipment that doesn't have the life cycle, the repayment obligation, then, then tha- that's efficient, that's your guys' recommendation, and I just wanna put that on the record for the rest of us. My second question is.
Well, with that, is it okay if I, this is a one-time situation, this is not, uh, a typical situation we're gonna be dealing with, this is an animal control facility that we weren't expecting to have to build in the middle of every, so I, I don't wanna, this is not apples to apples with other things.
I would also. Allow me to ask my questions.
Okay.
Um, second, um, the, the specific, the question I have is, since we're now paying for all this equipment through the bond, um, are we gonna see savings in the operations of the facility? Because it was communicated to us when we agreed to this animal shelter that we will build it, and somebody, a third party would come and operate it, so since we're now paying for all the equipment, do we anticipate savings on, on the operational end of things?
Yeah, I.
I would expect, as an example, uh, since we are buying the, uh, vehicles, that, that would not be, uh, that would be accounted for in the operations contract, so we, we would not see charges for vehicles in the operation contract.
Okay, and Jim, what's the life cycle of a city vehicle?
Depends, um, so sedan is seven years, uh, uh, heavy truck or medium truck is usually 10, so they're shorter than the, the bond period. I, I, I wanna point out though, too, that, uh, this, uh, bond amount was on the small side, and, uh, our, our lower limit is really roughly 20 million dollars, and, and so, um, it, it, it made sense to, uh, fund the additional items within that bond structure.
No, I, and, and I, I understand you guys' rationale, um, city assistant city manager and mayor, so I just wanted to point out that, you know, for the public to understand that we're financing over a 30-year period, you know, vehicles that have a life cycle of seven to 10 years, so.
Under normal conditions, I wouldn't recommend this.
I understand that. Yeah, and the reason, um, I bring this up as Assistant City Manager is, this is not the only construction project we're gonna engage in the next few months. You know, we've just authorized a purchase of the Travel Inn, that will be a construction project that we'll have to consider, you know, um, we're paying for it upfront, but, you know, how we finance the long-term operations. We agreed to, uh, potentially purchase a Fresno B building, that will require significant, you know, modifications, purchase of equipment, purchase of vehicles, so I'm just trying to set the stage for, um, to Councilwoman Soria's, uh, point. At the animal shelter is unique, but it's not the only non-public safety facility that this council has begun the process of acquiring, and therefore renovating and having to find a way to finance it, so I just wanna caution all of us with, 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 with that, as, as, as we accept this proposal to, you know, bond it out, 'cause I, I would agree with the mayor, when you have good credit, as I've said before, when you have good credit, you should use it. Um, when you have a crisis like the pandemic, you should probably access a reserve. Thus far, we continue to protect the reserve, and it's grown a little bit, so if the pandemic is not an emergency, if the budget crisis is not an emergency, if the animal shelter is yet not an emergency for accessing the, the reserve, that I just wanna be very clear with everyone, that, um, in the out years, we will pay a higher cost, um, because we've chose to, which, you know, I'm not judging whether it's a right or, or wrong decision, I understand the rationale for recommending it, I just wanna caution us that we're gonna have to cross this bridge again in the near future on other facilities that we acquire, and other, you know, human purchases.
Congress, council president.
Yes, of course.
This is not the first time, I was in the city council, we had, uh, I remember Met Museum, Granite Park, and other places that were coming up, we, we had to pay money of, and we had to cross collateralize the loans, including, we had to pay for a roof at City Hall, we paid for HVAC systems, we're including the bond, this has been done before. I don't advocate this as a common practice, so in answer to your question, which is a good concern, it doesn't mean everyone should be done that way, but I believe based on the timing, the type of project we have would be appropriate.
Okay, and my, and my last caution, mayor, to, to the staff, is, the first time that we did a change order, we did it because the contractor that we reached an agreement with could not, um, secure the bonding sufficient for the project. The second change order is to essentially include a lot of equipment and changes that you guys have outlined as part of a 30-year financing plan. Um, so I just wanna caution, um, the staff that as, as much confidence as I have in our ability to build a fire station and police station, although some of them don't always make it on budget, there's a lot of, you know, this take from Peter to, you know, complete the project for Paul, um, that these projects are unique, and I'm also gonna be reluctant to do this a third time on this project, so as much as I am a dog lover, and I don't have anything, um, um, over cats, but, um, I want staff to understand that we are spending a significant amount of time on this conversation, 'cause we wanna watch closely, and this project was not sent to the Oversight Committee that oversaw the half-billion dollar, you know, uh, DPU project in Southeast Fresno, so it's gonna be now in the council to be that hands-on oversight entity, so, um, I just wanna, you know, reemphasize that, we're paying attention, we're gonna be asking all our questions, and we're gonna trust staff to stay on budget and on time.
So, Council President, just to be clear, so you brought up the issue of vehicles, so we are purchasing vehicles with this additional change order?
No, we are not purchasing vehicles with this additional change order, we are purchasing vehicles with the bond proceeds.
Correct. We're financing the vehicles through the bond proceeds.
Correct. Probably over 15 years or 20 years, not over 30 years, most likely.
All right, we'll go to Councilmember Carbasi for hopefully last comment before I, I take a motion, 'cause one hasn't been made yet.
Yeah, um, I'll make a motion to approve then. Um, no, actually, Councilmember Soria, did you make a motion?
I had already made a motion to approve, and.
We do need a second.
I'll second it, or I think, you know, Councilmember Bretafell did second it, if I recall earlier, correct?
So, councils, uh, really quick, the councilwoman made a motion to approve with a facilities construction person included, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna modify my, I'm gonna modify my, um, motion, just because I, like I mentioned to Scott, I said that, um, given his response, I will trust that he has the t- the right team in place to keep this going and, um, meeting our timeline and our budget, so. The right team in place to keep this going and um meeting our timeline and our budget, so.
Remember, uh sorry, make some motion, is second by member, uh Brettafield, to approve, uh as recommended by staff. If there's no other discussion, we'll go to roll call.
That that includes the cat uh section, right?
Yes, we'll name it after.
Yeah, Mr. President, you you actually made some really good points, uh and asked good questions, and I appreciate that, I like that we're making it very clear, we're not setting a precedent. Um with this vote, um and like, for example, the B building, that's more for a department. As opposed to this being what I think is kind of a core service for a city. What I really appreciate, and we're gonna, I think we're gonna have a a nice chat about the reserves, is for the public to know that. We are in a financial position that's positive, unlike a lot of other cities in this state. And I'm concerned whenever we want to spend the reserves, if if a council's gonna be disciplined enough to replenish them. When it comes to, when it comes time where we have more income coming in, but having those reserves for me. Is a real cushion against layoffs like we had in two thousand nine, it's nice to know that despite COVID. We can continue providing public safety and picking up your garbage and fixing potholes. That to me is the biggest benefit of reserves aside from the financial benefits, so. Having said that, um it'll be a very robust conversation when we get to that, I don't want people thinking that just because we're not tapping the reserves, we don't care. It gives us the ability to do a lot that we need to do for you.
All right, roll call please, thank you staff for allowing us a time to ask you a lot of questions on this important matter.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh excuse me, Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Krabasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes, next item is, uh thank you, mayor, next item is Councilmember Sparza, one J.
Yeah, I wanted to get a presentation from uh Public Works. Uh Scott, I understand that this is just to initiate the the hearing for next month, but I still wanted to just kind of publicly get a. Larger background on what's going on here.
Right, uh good morning, Council President, Councilmember Scott Moser, Public Works. Uh this item, uh as is typically the case, is a resolution of intent to annex. Into the community facilities district. Developers and creating new subdivisions and developments, they're always given the option either to. Create a homeowners association or uh to annex the new. Facilities they're creating for maintenance into into that maintenance district. Uh this is an eighteen lot subdivision. And uh the maximum special tax, that additional amount would be two hundred seventy three dollars a year per lot. And includes the landscape buffer uh on Willow, on uh on the major street. Uh new streetlights, paving, uh concrete curb gutter and sidewalk to ensure long term. Uh that the neighborhood is well, well maintained.
Okay, Scott, and uh and this was initiated by the property owner?
Uh that that is correct, uh the developer uh would like to annex into the CFD uh for that maintenance.
Okay, so I, well, the process is, once we say we pass this today, we do the public hearing next month. Would uh a vote at that time and next, in January, would that solidify and finalize this? Would there be a further, another vote after that?
Uh Councilmember, that's correct, uh this would be the vote on the CFD annexing them into the district. And uh then the council would also see a final subdivision map come as another agenda item.
Okay, sounds good, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, just to move the process forward, and I'll look forward to. I'll look forward to uh examining and analyzing uh the further materials as we come to a final decision.
Motion being made by Member Sparza, second by Member Soria, roll call please.
Councilmember Brettafield? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Krabasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes, next item is Councilmember Soria's item one K.
Yeah, does the staff have a presentation on the floor? I know that there's a couple of BPAC folks or cyclists and pedestrian folks.
Uh yes, uh council, if we could admit Jill Gormley. And then also two BPAC members uh into, and there they are, uh into the Zoom, that'd be great.
All right, folks, you have been admitted, uh on the condition that you behave and follow the rules, or else we'll have to disipend you all. So, uh Scott, you have the floor.
All right, good morning, council, uh like to introduce Jill Gormley, our manager of traffic operations and planning, who uh. Facilitates the monthly uh bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. Um so turn it over to Jill, but really to highlight, this is the BPAC's report to you as the council. And uh turn it over to Ms. Gormley.
Yes, good morning, Jill Gormley, Public Works Department, um what is before you right now is. The first of what we hope will be semi annual reports from our BPAC committee. Um BPAC prepared, the BPAC members prepared the report um to highlight some of the activities that have taken place over the last six months. Which would be April through September, um we do have Melanie Rubikapla, who is our vice chair of the BPAC and. Not, and Phil Arbao, who is our chair of the BPAC, and and they are available to speak about the. The um activities of BPAC and and what we have coming up.
You may proceed.
I'm muted, I'm muted, how about now?
You're good.
Thank you, Jill, uh for that, so I'm Phil Arbao, I'm the chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the City of Fresno, and I think Melanie's on as well, she's our. Vice Chair, this is our, I think, I believe, our first semi annual report that has been ever delivered to the city. Uh and to council, and thank you so much for uh wanting to hear what we've been up to for this last year, Councilmember Soria, for. For pulling this, uh it really is a nine month report, not a semi annual report. Uh as it it covers everything from the very beginning of the year, which includes um our elections. Uh to chair and vice chair, and then of course, how we're dealing with COVID, and and we've really changed our format to the. To this um, to this committee where, you know, we we want to get more involved with. Uh the city and and council members and and going forward on on recommending, you know, uh bicycle pedestrian safety. Or uh anything that, anything that you need our our help with, uh we're really uh into. Getting involved and and the results uh from that, and I think that's what we've done, we tried to do this last nine months. Because uh which which obviously was really tough because of the COVID situation, but is you, as you'll see in your report, um. I think some of the most, um, some of the highlights here are 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 the, the status above some of our current members. Uh we just recently in September had two members uh terms expired, both in District One and in District Two. So we have two vacancies there, and I think for about a year now, we've almost had a vacancy in District Four. And we actually are in touch with Councilmember Elect uh Maxwell, and we should be be a meeting with him here soon in order to. Hopefully get his input on, and and his response on 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 appointing someone to that seat. So it's kind of a thin crew right now as of September, but we used to be, all all nine of us were, were uh, were there, I should say. And some other stats that you might be looking at here, um just goes with the the statistics of pedestrian and bicycle. Uh fatalities within the, within the city limits, uh last year we had twenty three, it looks like. This year, as of October eighth, we're already up to thirty three, so I know that unfortunately. I know, I know we get caught up in 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 homicides, because I mean, that's, that is a huge thing in public safety. But this is really a public safety issue as well, the amount of pedestrians and bicycle fatalities we've had. In the City of Fresno due to to various, uh you know, various circumstances around the city, so. It is alarming that we're already up to thirty three, uh we're gonna have our next me, uh meeting here in the next week. And we'll get our updated statistics from PB on this, PD on this, but um. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, um you know, I think right now in the City of Fresno, the leading causes of death are COVID. Uh homicides, and you have bicycle and pedestrian fatalities, which is not uh. Not something that we would want, so we encourage everyone to, you know, come to our meetings, send your your council representatives and and then. You know, find out what we're trying to do to mitigate, uh you know, the safety and and those fatalities here in the City of Fresno. Um another highlight was in May in twenty twenty, uh we were awarded once again the bronze status uh from the League of American Bicycle, is that correct, Melanie? Is that, is that what that is? And um, so that's renewed for another five years. And while we love being, uh and then while we take that, you know, that recognition, uh you know, we're honored to have that recognition. We really want to get up to that, that silver status uh for the City of Fresno, and we have five years to do it, um so. Um I'm looking forward to having, you know, robust conversations here in the next couple of years, especially with the new. Uh council coming on and how we get there, and as you see there, um I think one of the biggest things that I know we've been pushing for is an establish of a. Establishment of an active transportation coordinator position within the, within the City of Fresno. Uh obviously, there's other highlights there on what we can do to get to that silver status. Melanie is actually heading up our task force of the strategic, strategic planning uh task force within the committee. Uh on how we get to uh the silver status, so um, so that's what Melanie has headed up there. Uh obviously, the biggest thing with COVID this year, one of our results was getting, I believe, the council to recognize the. Importance of slow streets when we were uh in the, right in the middle of COVID, that's something that we're gonna continue to. You know, push forward as we go into this next year, because we are still within COVID. And hopefully, we can get results on that, if there's, you know, uh council members that are willing uh to to help us out there and and opening up their council district to. Some type of slow streets project, obviously, funding is always uh something that's super important on how we're gonna get that done. Uh so that's one of the things that um uh we've been, you know, working towards uh this year as well. And uh I believe we uh also here, it'll say that uh. You know, our goals for the next six months, uh which started in in September, is is to fill our vacancies, obviously. Uh meet with the incoming mayor and new council member elect Maxwell, which he's already, as of yesterday, he reached out, so that was uh. Really nice, we're gonna get that one going, and obviously implement our slow streets plan. Uh here within the City of Fresno, if if that's something that we can do, our our Fresno. Uh we have signed on to multiple uh letters of support this year as well, uh that members of uh. Community, or I should say, departments have asked us to sign on, the county of Fresno asked us to sign on to a few things as well, so. We're looking forward to working with everyone, uh especially the new council uh this next year, getting more involved. And and being more results oriented, I I I encourage everyone again to come. To a BPAC meeting, or send your representatives here, we are ready to work, we are ready to go forward. We are ready to, you know, recommend and and move the city to, you know, a more safe city for our bicycle and pedestrian safety. Bicycle and pedestrian.
Phil, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Isn't one of the recommendations kind of as part of your vice's um update? That we should hire uh ATP, a permanent ATP coordinator? Of contention, and I think for me, you know, the reason that I pulled this item, and this has been uh an important issue. Um for myself, um the council, uh I think district that I represent. Um I represent, you know, the southern part of the city and um, and there's a tremendous need, we are moving in a. I think a positive direction with, you know, some of the projects that uh we will be seeing in the next year and so forth. To try to improve our level, but I I do believe that, you know, that this council should consider, and we should have a debate at some point. I I know that there was no money included in the budget, but that if this is something that um the next, next administration can support. Because I do believe that um Phil raised and the committee uh raised several points that are important, is the fact of the matter is that we are having. Some increase, increasing numbers and fatalities, and I think that by having staff that is, um that actually has a time, I know that Jill right now is kind of acting. Uh or has that role, but Jill, you're extremely busy, you know, um with all the other things that you are. Um the engineer for uh for public works in terms of traffic, and I think that it is, there is a lot of value. In us having an ATP coordinator, I think that the this um body has proposed it to us for some time. It's been a point of contention, I think that our council should be, um I know that I, I I don't think I could make a motion right now to fund. Because we don't have anything in the budget, but I I do want to give, um or at least allude to the fact that we should be. Including this in the next budget, in figuring out how we can add additional resources, so that one, we're funding this. Full time position, that we are also ensuring that the slow streets concept is, is um really. A thing that can be implemented in the City of Fresno, with COVID, we are seeing more people walking and biking. Because of the fact that there are not other, um too many entertain, you know, places of entertainment that are open today. I know Council President Arias is an avid um cyclist in our community as well, and so he sees. These same issues in his district, and I think that at some point, we have to figure out how BPAC really is gonna be. Uh you know, recommending uh some policy changes that are gonna be positive to be able to. Get us to the bronze level um quicker than, I mean, the the next level, what is it, the gold level? Quicker than in the next five years, uh you know, one person to many in a uh fatality. Either by being a pedestrian or or biking is one too many, um and so. I'm not proud of the numbers that Fresno has, I know other big cities are making enormous strides. To try to address those issues, I think that we could do some additional PSAs and public education, and when it comes to like the share. The share rows that are out there, I don't even think people know what they are. Uh I don't know about you guys, if the council even knows that we actually put, put out share rows, and if you guys even know what they are. Um out in some of our streets, but the education and the outreach to the community hasn't been robust, so people don't know. So that's why you'll, you'll see, you know, cars not being so friendly towards those that are biking, so I think that we can do a better job, there's an opportunity. There's obviously a group of committed folks that have been part of BPAC for a number of years that want to see us take it to the next level. And I just want to let them know that I'm supportive of that, and um I just wish that we had, and that this council would allocate a little bit more resources. To really demonstrate that we're committed to not just our our cyclists, but our our residents that are walking. In our community, and we know that there's a lot of them, a lot of them that take public transportation, that have to walk from one neighborhood to another. So um it is time that we do more than what we're doing today, thank you.
And and one of the reasons.
My questions and comments, so I don't know if any might call.
I can, I can support that, I can support that position if uh Council President Arias promises to stop wearing those skin tight shorts while he's biking.
All right, all right, folks, um so Phil, you guys are between us and lunch, and um since um we're all getting hungry. We're gonna try and bring this to a close, but um I I would agree with the council members on uh Luis's point and Soria's point, both. I I do hope that um in addition to meeting with uh council-elect uh Maxwell, that you also meet with Mayor Lake Dyer. Um and see, um and talk with him about um your budget priorities before they design their budget that they're gonna present to the council. Because that's half the battle, the other half is, you know, having the council do it through a series of motions. Um but I I do think it's a fair point to say that we can all afford to bike and walk more often, and that we shall feel safe in our city doing so. And unfortunately, it's one of the largest shortcomings of the City of Fresno, is the lack of safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, and um. I don't think we need any additional evidence to to um recognize that, so let me close the council conversation. Um I do have one public speaker on this item, so I'll go to Mr. Gene Richards, and then we'll close this item uh before lunch. Gene, you are unmuted, you have the floor. Go ahead, Gene.
He's still muted.
Yeah, he is.
I can hear somebody, Gene.
Gene, you have the ability to unmute yourself.
All right, then we'll try Gene some other time, um as this is gonna be an ongoing conversation for the council. With that council, if there's no other conversations, um I'll take a motion to accept the report, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Oh, I think he unmuted himself now.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes, with that provision.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Yes, in seconding the provision.
Councilmember Soraya?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes, that's just a record show that that's a passive aggressive when you talk about dogs over cats that you get from member Chavez. So, council, we're gonna break for lunch, we will return with three items left on the contested consent. That is, the first item is parking, um, that will hear last, and then the two appointments before we get to closed session, this is a reminder, it looks like we don't have um after the consent calendar contested items, we will immediately enter closed session, so we'll see you back at one thirty for the three remaining items and closed session.
Um, okay, thank you.
Chavez? Uh, Sparza? Councilmember Chavez? I did submit a a harassment complaint with your wife about your anti-dog comments.
Anti-short shorts?
All right, looks like we have a a quorum, um, we do see Councilman Vice President Capriolio popping up, uh Brettafield and Karbasi also coming online. So council, we will begin um with uh item one C as in cat, um, is our parking department available, our director, are you online? City manager, do we see you guys online yet? Hey, Aldi.
Hi there, you should be on.
I'm here.
Hey, Director, all right, we left off with you um with several pending questions that hopefully you've had time to give us some responses to, so um we'll proceed with the parking item one C.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Soraya, we left it off with you. Um, Director, do we have answers to the questions that were provided earlier?
Yeah, if you like, I'll go through those right now for you.
Thank you.
Um, so the proposed ACE contract is thirteen point two million. Five years on the current SP plus contract is eleven point two million. Um, that's allocated eight point eight to parking and two point four million from regional parks. The next question is, how was that, how is that paid? Um, the parking one is paid from the general fund, the parking portion rather, and the parks portion is paid two thirds from the parks special revenue fund and one third from the general fund.
So it's the eight million, or in this instance, it's gonna be a larger number?
Yeah, in in this instance, it'll um for this new contract, I'm sorry, let me grab that. Page in front of me here. Yeah, that for, that'll be for um for downtown, that would be nine point five million and then three point um three point six million for regional parks.
Um, so we see, you know, a couple million in terms of an increase, so what are addition what additional um benefits or kind of improvements do you foresee us um getting with that addition additional amount?
Um, what I really see particularly as we look at um downtown is um the RFP itself is much more detailed and outlines the expectations of the operator, so, for example, focusing on outcomes. Um, so whereas before, the expectation may have been pressure wash the stairwells twice a week or empty the trash cans twice a day, now it's built on language like the stairwells must always be clean and trash must be picked up and those types of things, so we'll really be able to hold the operator accountable for expectations relative to um the physical maintenance of the facility. And then also, as I talked about earlier, um, moving forward to partner with them on um how we may proceed with some customer service and technology enhancements like you've seen off-street into the garages now.
Seems like a lot of money just for that, but I don't know. Couple million bucks to expect them to actually have the facilities managed and. No, I I don't know, it seems like a lot of money for me. Especially general fund and as we're, you know. Hopefully, we get some federal assistance, but we're gonna be struggling with, you know, aftermath of this pandemic.
Councilwoman, we're we're losing you in and out of audio. I think it might be internet connection.
Probably, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, now I I I'm just expressing my concern, it it just doesn't seem like we're getting much more than what we should have been getting for that amount, now we're gonna pay them so that we can actually supposedly get what we should have been getting originally. That's what, that's what's concerning to me, that we can't articulate what other, you know, additional benefits. I don't know, I I'd like to hear what my other colleagues think, this is a significant amount of money. I I'd like to hear kind of the input from my other colleagues, do you guys, you know?
Are you doing any questions, Councilwoman?
I think I I wanna hear from other folks.
I just wanna ma- make sure before I move on to the members.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
All right, so, Thomas, uh, the total is thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, and so, uh, thirteen million, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What was the, um, I know you alluded to, what was it, what were we paying SP for the prior five years?
Um, eleven point three million. Um, and then if you look at the um other proposers that came in um on the bid, um, ACE was in the middle of the price ranges um and came in uh cheaper than both um Laz and uh Pro Park.
Okay, and SP, you said they didn't meet expectations, what expectations didn't they meet?
Um, in both the, in the RFP, we had um a number of areas where they didn't um respond thoroughly, um, and then also staff's determination based on the interview process.
Well, so are you saying in the interview for this new contract, they didn't meet expectations?
Uh, no, 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 eh ACE performed better in the interview than SP plus the current operator did.
Okay, I thought though you were saying that they didn't meet expectations in terms of their five-year contract.
Yeah, um, it, what I was, so there's, sorry for the terminology there. SP plus the current operator also, as we've had them here, have had a number of deficiencies that we've worked with them to address, um, some of which they have and ums, many of which they had not, so that's a correct statement as well.
Okay, and so that's what I'm asking, what were the deficiencies that they?
Um, a a lot of them were relative to um the upkeep and maintenance of the facilities, the quality of life things as it relates to downtown, such as, you know, clinging and maintaining of the stairwells, the quality of the customer service at the ticket booths, um, and that kind of thing, and and not always being proactive um on our behalf.
Okay.
That was the biggest deficiency.
And when you talked to them about that, I assume you talked to them about this, they didn't make changes?
No, I mean, we've talked about it, we've documented in writing multiple times um since I've been here at the city and so on.
Okay, and the uh, you said uh ACE was in the middle, I think I saw that she, um, what was the lo- low uh bid? Was that from SP?
Um, no, it wasn't from SP plus, it was um the lowest bidder um was non-responsive. Um, and then the um other two, um the next lowest bidder, um, premium parking, there's assumed an implementation of their own proprietary technology for the system to work, and that wasn't within the scope of what we've requested. Um, and then the pro park proposal was low, but also assumed um a lot more initial upfront cost the city would have to do for technology for them to um support. And um, pro park didn't have um as strong of references for downtown municipal operations like ours. Um, so that's how we arrived at SP plus.
Now, in the uh audit of our parking, uh, when we did the internal audit, a number of issues came up, one of them being not having tremendous oversight over collections. Uh, has that all been rectified now?
Yes, and and we had transmitted to the internal auditor um various status memos on where we're at, um, and they've already conducted field work on um a follow-up to that audit um to confirm the status of those.
Okay, and so we are not gonna have people now walking around with bags of money like they used to?
Uh, no, we will not, that's part of our on-street operation, and that will be resolved with the parking meters that were awarded a couple weeks ago. So no more coffee cans of coins, I promise.
Okay, hey, and I'm just, I think I'm uh agreeing with uh Councilwoman Soraya, I'm just struck by the size of this number in terms of operating and management fees of you know, thirteen million dollars to do all this. Um, it just seems exorbitant to me, uh, I, you know, I'm not in in the business. Uh, I guess these other companies have put in proposals, but it seems awfully high, I mean, it would seem like uh, you know, Councilman Karbasi and Soraya and I could probably come in, we could probably get this done for oh, seven million dollars, I would think.
I'd love to see the council members with the power wash system on the stairwell e- every morning after we have homeless folks.
For seven million dollars, I think we'll do it.
I I don't know, that sounds like a no-bid contract to me.
I uh, I knew you were gonna go there.
Yeah, I think Jim has a question, Jim?
I I had a couple of things, uh, and Thomas, I wanna make sure I'm stating this right. The the last contract was bid six years ago?
Yes.
And so, you know, there is probably some cost of money involved in here, here in the eleven to thirteen million dollar difference. Um, that that's about a three percent increase per year. Um, also remember that this contract is a a five-year contract?
Yes.
So we're talking, you know, thirteen million divided by five, so it's a rough roughly a couple million plus per per year. Um, you just wanted to point that out.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you.
One of the other questions that um just came to mind, because I didn't see the the agreement on the staff report, is there an agreement that is has been signed by?
Uh, no, the coun- the council action is to authorize the director to then execute the agreement, so.
I thought that that's not, that's not usually every agreement comes to the council already signed so that we could review it. City Attorney, is that not the standard, is this a different instance? You're on mute, Doug.
When it's a bid process that requires completing the contract after a council approval, then they're not necessarily assigned before coming to council.
Okay, okay, and so i- is it just a complete five-year, not like one-year renewal on a yearly basis? How is that structured, how are you guys gonna structure it?
Um, what this one would be structured for is based on this language, um, that it would be a five-year. Um, and then if.
And then I yeah, and I, and I know that Council Brettafield also noted the significant um concerns that were raised in the audit. I know that originally there were some council members that, and that includes Council President, that wanted us to explore a parking authority or of that sort, so once we lock this in, we're pretty much locked in, I just wanna make sure that we're all aware, I don't know if the council now has abandoned that idea at all, I don't know, we we really haven't had a an ability to have, or we haven't had the opportunity to have a broader discussion when it comes to parking and especially um in light of the former audit, if this is the way that we wanna proceed. Council President, I know that you were one of the biggest um critics, so I'm interested in your uh position on this, because this will lock us in.
Ma- can I answer a quick question?
Yes.
Um, I was gonna say, we can work with City Attorney when we develop the contract to include assignment language, so that that way, if a parking authority were a form, the contract could be assigned to the parking authority as a new legal entity.
I also just wanna clarify though too, and I'm hearing from Michael Lima right now, that internal audit has just started the field work on the parking audit follow-up, so that 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 will be coming to you it when their work is done as well.
What, when, what's the timing for that, City Manager?
Um, I can find out and I I will report back in a second.
Okay, Council President, I defer to you.
Thank you for putting me on the spot um this afternoon.
Council President, I defer to you.
Yes, I know, thank you. Um, I have not dropped the idea of establishing a parking authority, um, a- as you recall, there was a lot of kicking and screaming um on us even bringing a parking authority to the conversation um when we were still collecting coins with coffee cups and, you know, an audit found significant amount of shortcomings in the parking department. Uh, we had agreed last uh that we discussed is that we would give the parking department the ability to clean up their act, um, and we, the auditors would return with an update, I know um uh Mr. Lima has been distracted with CARES Act um recently, and he has not done the follow-up audits on not only the parking department, but also the police department that also had significant findings. So I'm I'm okay with going forward with this contract, because at the end of the day, we have a really, you know, poor customer service and poor outcomes with the current provider, on the condition, of course, that we put language that allows us to reassign um this service and this contract to another entity that council chooses to go in a different direction with its parking operations. So um we, I'm hoping that the grace period that we've given the parking staff and our director, Cafri, that he will follow through with the iPhone version of parking in downtown Fresno. I know the wireless meters um were full speed ahead, and then in the budget, the city manager removed uh wireless meters from the budget, then we put it back in in October. So um there has been some delays, but uh my hope is that the parking uh staff will follow through with their commitments to bring us up to a a modern version of of parking in in downtown Fresno, so with that, I'm willing to be supportive of this, um, as long as the contract includes provisions that the council may reassign it if it chooses to pursue a parking authority.
And Council President, I would support that, um, can we also make sure that that um information that the city manager mentioned on the follow-up of the audit gets presented publicly?
Yeah, we we have a process for that, and my understanding is that that audit um follow-up field work will be done in about three months. And and Council President, with all due respect, the internal audit team has been continuing with various audits audits per their risk assessment that they do, so it's not like they've been on hold because of CARES dollars or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, City Manager, everybody's been working during this pandemic. Um, it's just that the follow-up audits for those departments have taken almost a year since the findings were made, and that's unusual for any follow-up audits. With that, we'll make a motion to approve the item with direction that and provision be added, um, allowing us to reassign uh this service uh to uh entity that council chooses to do so, so Doug, I'll let you work out the language with our with our directors um before you guys finalize the contract.
Hey, Council President, my hand's been raised for a little while now.
Oh, go ahead, I didn't see you.
Yeah, um, last question for Thomas, um, you know, we're having this discussion, I think there's a lot of value to having that. I've been here ten years, and you're starting to see a pattern with, you know, these parking service providers where they come, present a really great proposal, and then for some reason, the performance measures aren't met, right, we've had that happen with ACE before, and then we gave it to the current one. Now ACE is coming back saying they have these new new, these new shiny provisions that they're implementing. So what's in the language, Thomas or or legal counsel, that allow, uh, you know, kind of forces them to actually perform what they're saying and and not drop the ball, and then what provisions do we have and not drop the ball? And then what provisions do we have to terminate that contract for non-performance?
Well, for any breach of contract, we can terminate. It may require notice. We could also insert if the council wanted to, as a condition of approval, just termination for convenience. In other words, on 30 days' notice, we can give notice to terminate if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to include that language in there. So I'll make that motion if it's a friendly amendment to the maker of the motion.
Well, except the amendment, Councilmember.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Cafri, so we're giving you the green light with the understanding that we're adding some additional provisions that give you the full authority to hold the vendor accountable for meeting the metrics that they have agreed to in this multimillion-dollar contract over five years.
I think Jim wants to say something. Miguel?
Assistant City Manager, for some reason I'm not seeing you guys.
I might make a suggestion. I hope I'm not putting Thomas on the spot here, but on other contracts such as our fax handy ride, we put incentives and disincentives in the contract to, as to where if they did not perform, they would get less money. If they perform, they would get more money. That's something we might consider.
Can we do an incentive, Jim, that if they don't perform, they don't get no money?
All right.
Yeah, I'd rather do that. I'm not, I don't want to give them more money. I think we're giving them enough money. They should just do the service.
All right.
You could put a monetary value to not performance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not getting paid. That's the monetary value.
Zero is the value.
So Mr. Cafri, as you can see, I think that this council has had a lot of experience with, you know, vendors who are not performing to expectations. So please, let's hold them accountable because we don't want to be back here again in a year.
Absolutely.
All right, there's a motion. There's a second. We'll do roll call.
Can I clarify who the second was?
Councilwoman Soria.
Okay, thank you.
And there was a friendly amendment to that as well.
I do have that. Okay, so Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
And President Arias?
Yes. All right, council, we are not up to the next two items that were pulled by Councilmember Sparza. Item 1O and 1P, Councilmember Sparza, you have the floor.
I don't have any further specific questions on these. I had expressed my preference to take up appointments in January. So my position has not changed since this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made. It's been seconded. I only have one request. City Clerk, this is for you. Can you provide this council a ma- metrics, a matrix of all the appointees and what districts they, they live in? I want to see what the equity is on the appointments that the current mayor has made and the expirations of those terms so that we're clear about what vacancy exists in these multiple committees.
Okay, on just these two committees for O and P?
On all the committees.
All of them, okay.
In the form of a memo to the council so that we're all aware.
And Mr. President, if we can do that, I also want a list of the qualifications then that are required for the committee because there's certain levels of expertise people have. I don't want to discriminate based on where they live. It's a matter of having the skills to add to the committee and be an asset.
I think we would all agree that there are qualified candidates in North, South, East, West, and Central Fresno. So any additional information you would like, I'd be happy to make sure that's provided to all of us.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
And then I wanted to ask a question, Council President, real quick. Did anyone confer with mayor-elect to see? Because as people noted, these appointments are for about four years. Does he have the power to remove them at any time if he wishes to change? Or I'm just, that was the only concern that I, and I want to be consistent with my position. I voted to support tabling other appointments in the last council meeting because I do believe that it's important that the next mayor gets to appoint these folks if it is for the next four years. And so.
I get to have a little fun now. I never liked it when the Republicans did that to President Obama. I'm not gonna do it either on this council. We're not gonna Merrick Garland, Lee Brand. And that's just in good fun. I appreciate the position you have. You want to be consistent and I understand. If you look at James Popovich, one of his references is actually Jerry Dyer. So in his case, I didn't actually ask the mayor-elect on that one.
So is Jerry Dyer conflicted out on keeping his recommendation?
Can we call for the question?
Thank you, Councilmember McConnell. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Question's been called. We'll do a roll call now.
Okay, am I doing a roll call for items O and P?
Yes, please, both together.
Okay. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Nay.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
No.
Okay.
Motion carries for three.
It does. It carries for three. Council, it looks like we're ready for a closed session. Before we go there though, I want to make sure legal counsel and our city clerk confirm that we are done with all the agenda because there was a lot of movements and I want to make sure I tracked them correctly. The 10 o'clock hearing was moved to December 10. The 1R item, the joint medium, to December 10.
Yes.
We're left with three closed session items. Conference with legal counsel and President Chris Lee's baseball. Conference on property negotiations. And real property negotiations that has been addressed. Is there any other item?
I understand you have just a closed session.
Yes, oh, and we have the evaluation of the city clerk and the city attorney.
Right.
So it's two, four.
Four items.
Four items.
All right, let the public be aware that we're about to go into closed session to discuss the city attorney, city clerk evaluation, property negotiations on two parcels and a lease agreement with the Grizzly baseball team. Is there anybody wishing to address the council from the public on these closed session items?
Actually.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, actually you asked me to unmute and I actually had comments on your parking contract to let you guys know about what I've had to deal with. But since that's passed, I guess you guys don't really care about the opinion. But you'll be dealing with the travelers, the travel-in again?
No, the travel-in has been addressed already.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Well, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on the closed session items listed? Seeing none, council will see you in closed session.
Same link, same link.
The one on your calendar, yes, on your calendar. Same link.
Thank you.